Britten, would you please call the roll?
Peter Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee App.
Here.
Trustee Kumsesmail.
Here.
Trustee Danforth.
Here.
Trustee Corvillan.
Here.
All right, and welcome everyone to this meeting. Three items on the consent agenda, the warrants, the minutes, and a case. I would, yeah, just to remind everyone, if you're not speaking, please mute yourself so that we can hear everyone as we speak, as questions come up, but any members of the board trustees have questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion from trustee Kumsesmail, do we have a second? Sound like a second from trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Miranda?
Trustee Kumsesmail.
Yes.
Trustee App.
Yes.
Peter Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Corvillan.
Trustee Corvillan? Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, consent agenda passes. We will move on to the public comment section of the agenda. We have two items of public comment that have been entered in the record via email, but anyone else who would like to speak for three minutes per person, this is your opportunity. I would remind everyone, we've changed our policy recently that we would ask you to simply state your name and whether or not you are a resident of Netherland. If you're not a resident, you know, tell us, you know, are you Boulder County, Gilpin County? What's your relationship to Netherland might be? So, does anyone like to speak for three minutes on any non-agenda item? I am seeing and hearing nothing. So, we will continue to move forward on the agenda to our first informational item this evening, which is the water wastewater financial plan, PIF fee and rate study overview and discussion that we've been talking about. It'll be introduced by our town administrator Karen Garrity, and then we will hand that over to Reftellis. So Karen, please.
Good evening, Mr. Larson and trustees. I am happy today to introduce to you Andrew Ream and Hannah Palmer-Duar. They are from Reftellis, which is the company who was selected to conduct our rate study. And they are going to present you with an overview of the rate study process, which will cover financial planning, plant investment fees, pricing objectives, and rates and rate structure. And then, once they're finished, we will open it up for a discussion and questions with the board of trustees. So Andrew and Hannah, you're welcome to begin.
Thanks Karen, I'm gonna go ahead and share the presentation I've got. And let me see if I can get this up and going. Thank you guys for taking the time to include us on your agenda today. As Karen indicated, we're on the front end of Water and Wastewater Financial Plan, Plant Investment Fee and Rate Study for the town. As you know, many of you know, this was approved recently. There's an element that JBA is also, it started up and they're kind of on the front end of this. They're leading in master plan evaluation, overall review of the town's capital facilities, utility facilities. So, these two studies are intertwined and somewhat intentionally. My name is Andrew Ream, Hannah Palmer-Duar is also gonna be talking today on some of these slides. And really, our intent was to provide a bit of an overview, just kind of talk through the steps, what it is that we intend to complete, what we're scoped to do, but also receive input from the board on the front end of the study. You know, sometimes these projects, you know, it gets approved and you're aware it's going on, but maybe you don't hear from the consultant till towards the end. You know, really, the intent is to hear from us earlier and certainly provide, you know, input in terms of pricing objectives, or even just kind of an understanding of the study and the scope that we're completing. As Karen indicated, maybe hold questions to the end if you can. And, you know, we've got some time to talk through these slides and, but certainly, you know, questions and discussion are expected as well. So, when we get to that spot, you know, I imagine that there may be some Q and A from your end. As we're evaluating part of this, yes?
Andrew, I'm just, the screen share, we seem to still be seeing your folder with the slide tease, but we don't see the actual slides yet.
Okay, let's see. I thought I was sharing my other monitor, is that better?
See them in sort of a slide sorter view, we see the first slides, yes.
Yeah, hold on, let me adjust, sorry about that, I thought I had the right screen. I'm gonna adjust this a little bit. And let me see if this is, all right, is that better?
That looks great, thank you very much.
Great. As part of the study, one of the elements is, we're gonna talk about is a financial plan. And we're potentially gonna be looking at external funding, including debt. So, and this slide just lets the town know that, you know, before you issue debt or assign a loan agreement with the state, that while we're municipal advisors, this is what we do in terms of the utility financial plans. We're looking at local government debt issuances, but certainly retain the services of bond council or others, essentially is what MSRB, you know, wants, you know, communities to be aware of. So with that said, you know, I'm gonna go through and provide a little bit of an overview of the study. Just, you know, we've got a scope, within the scope, we've got five major tasks. And I'm not gonna go through and kind of read this, but there's some intentional steps. So, we're gonna talk about, you know, why we take the task two, the financial plan, the step where we do, and how that folds into task three, the evaluation of the capital recovery fees or the plant investment fees, assess the newer increased development. And then, how that rolls into rate design. These are the major objectives, not to exceed fee that was approved is roughly $40,000, a little more than that. And, you know, kind of covers these key items with the outputs, both a 10-year financial plan, updating the plant investment fees, to water and wastewater alternative rate structures. And then, certainly, the overall findings and recommendations and included within that are a mix of onsite meetings as well as web-based meetings, you know, similar to today. And the overall study schedule, we're anticipating about six months. And to the extent that we can accelerate things to support, you know, kind of the capital evaluation and support the master plan evaluation that JBA is leading, we will. And so, we're in month one, we're starting off on this process. And certainly, to the extent that, you know, we can wrap this up and complete this more quickly than the six months, then, you know, we may, you know, have final findings or recommendations available for valuation potential ordinances before the end of the year. But, as I mentioned before, really, that front end of the study, the task two, and that's where kind of the master plan and the financial plan get integrated. And then, as we go through, we really don't get into rates until we vetted the financial plan and the plant investment fees. And that's a bit by design, and Hannah will talk about this a little bit later. But, you know, we got a scope, here's the schedule, and icons with the primary deliverables. Really, this five-step process is when you go through, you know, comprehensive evaluation, a lot of similarities to what we're scoped to do, kind of where we are today in kickoff meeting with the town, kind of identify what are our objectives, what problem we try to solve. Financial plan gets into step two, and this is really where we're looking out in somewhat bigger picture, how much money do we need? And then, we go through and allocate those costs, that leads to rate design. And sometimes, when we get to the end, we, you know, in the weeds, we're in the details, the scenarios, the alternatives, but we kind of get back up in the bigger picture, look and indicate, you know, did we solve the issues? Did we solve the challenges we set out to meet? Or maybe we solved them, but the impacts or unintended consequences may be larger than what we'd like to bear. And so, we may go back and reassess, you know, rate revenue adjustment, or how projects, you know, issues of debt to help improve maybe the bill impacts or the overall outcomes. But, this encompasses the steps we're gonna take as part of this study. In terms of, you know, guidelines, there's no cookbook, there's no recipe. Different communities can value pricing objectives and put emphasis and priorities in one area, where another community puts it in a different area. It doesn't mean one's right and one's wrong, it's just that those objectives and those values represent the community. Different systems have different ages, different water supply, different histories, different geographies. So, there's certainly uniqueness of the town's utilities and the town and the town's customers and their objectives. With that said, there's some industry guidelines that we follow. These are two of the books, one is published by WWI, it's called M1, it's their biggest seller. And this lays out, you know, all the steps we're gonna go through, gets into certainly other wonky or technical issues that, you know, other systems may be more concerned about, you know, wholesale pricing, and so it covers that. And that may not be any issue for Netherland. There's a second book that Reftellis has published, and there's been a few editions that gets also into pricing and finance guide for water and wastewater. And there really hadn't been a textbook that covered this area until the first edition. So, these are a couple of the resources we rely on, there's certainly others, you know, that cover wastewater or certainly other industry guides and the experience we have. I've been doing this for 17 years, leading these studies throughout Colorado, throughout the southwest United States, so certainly leverage that experience as well. So, you know, in these types of studies, and particularly when we're looking at rates and rate structure alternatives, the principle of equity or fairness often comes into it, you know, whether it's a pricing objective or definition of essential water. So, you know, this graphic really kind of, you know, breaks it down and it looks at that, you know, from, there's different ways of looking at fairness and equity. You know, there's a moral, social aspect for essential, this is an essential service that life's dependent on. There's also sort of, you know, as a business, are we recovering our costs? We've got a cost of service, we've got facilities to maintain, to run, a service we're producing, is it financially viable? And then, we get into sort of economic principles with pricing and expectations and ability to pay and willingness to pay. This all gets folded in, and there's, you know, different ways that, you know, equity may be on the cost side, but also maybe having access to a minimum amount of water and how we price that. So, big picture, when we're kind of looking at objectives, I like to kind of cover this area because equity and fairness is certainly often a higher, a high prioritized objective for these studies. Another element, and this is a bit of a dichotomy with conservation and water use, where the sanitary and health and safety, you know, that essential amount of water to, you know, sanitary showering, you know, drinking, flushing the toilet, you know, these sort of basic human needs, that's most necessary, it's generally the least amount of water a customer may use. And then, as we kind of go across from necessary to discretionary, we pick up, you know, economic, you know, the hotel that needs water so that, you know, customers will stay there. Or we get into recreational opportunities, having water in the stream so that people will want to visit, or raft down or fish. And then, there, you get into sort of the outdoor aesthetic, where I like to have a green lawn, so I'm willing to pay more to have a green lawn, because I grew up in Michigan, and boy, things are just, you know, greener there, and I get some value out of it. That tends to be the most amount of water, the water people put outdoor. Not always the case, in Netherland, you know, it doesn't have as much outdoor usage on average than what we typically see. But, this kind of dichotomy where the most necessary is the least amount of water, the most discretionary is often the most on a, kind of per customer basis. So, sort of balancing these and meeting the other objectives we have often come into these studies. So, with that, I want to hand it to Hannah to talk a little bit about the financial plan. And, you know, the task is laid out, this is one of the first kind of steps, and it's intentionally designed to be upfront for us to resolve kind of big picture issues when it comes to the utility, the sufficiency of revenues today, and are there adjustments? Or are there external sources and prioritizing those needs? So, this first step, I'm gonna turn it over to Hannah to talk through these slides. And Hannah, if you want to, just let me know when you want me to advance, I'll advance the presentation.
Thanks so much Andrew, thanks for that introduction of the financial plan. Let's go to the next slide, please. So, as Andrew discussed in an earlier slide, the big question that we're trying to answer here is what level of revenue is needed to meet our expenditures? So, what we're trying to do is balance the revenues from operating and non-operating revenues with our expenses from things like operation and maintenance, any planned capital expenses and our debts. And the framework within which we work are our financial policies. And what we're, the study period that we're looking at is 2020 through 2029. We're trying to determine the sufficiency of revenues for today as well as the needs of the future. So, what we're setting up the town's decision makers for success for the next 10 years. Let's go to that next slide, Andrew. So, the three goals that we're trying to hit in terms of revenue sufficiency are funding our annual operations and maintenance expenses, our debt service payments, and any capital improvements or other requirements. We'll also be trying to exceed our annual debt service coverage ratio targets as well as exceed our annual operating and capital reserve targets. Next slide. So, the debt service coverage ratio, this is a condition of blown agreement, so this is a legal requirement. And think about it in terms of, if someone loans you money, you want to know, they want to know that you have enough money to loan you back, loan, to pay you back. The debt service coverage is calculated in the formula shown here, this is an annual test we're required to meet. So, it's the annual revenue less O and M costs divided by the debt service for that year. The legal requirement per our loans is 110%. Another way to think of that is for every $1 we borrow, we need to have $1.10 to pay back. And while 110% is the legal requirement, we take a more conservative approach. We like to advise our clients, say, a little bit higher, 130, 150% is a common target. And this just provides a little bit of a built-in cushion. And we'll look at the debt service coverage ratio for both utilities independently. So, we'll be trying to hit two different targets, or one target for each utility, so two debt service coverage ratios. Next slide, Andrew. The next target that we're trying to hit is this cash reserve. What we've shown here are a number of different types of reserves. These aren't necessarily all applicable to Netherland, but they are, they're, this is just a small selection of different types of reserves that different utilities might have in place for circumstances that are tailored to their own utility. Two of the most common ones are shown right there at the top, the operating and the capital reserve. The operating reserve is to have enough cash to pay the bills. So, this is covering the variability between the bills that are received by the utility for things like electricity or chemicals, and the revenues that come in from the users. So, there might be a little bit of a lag time in between when people, when the customers are paying their bills and when the utility itself has to pay the bills. The way that we look at the operating reserve target is through a, it's based on the operating and maintenance, sorry, the O and M of the year, so 15 to 25% of total O and M expenses. And we can also look at it in terms of days per year, so 60 to 90 days of O and M expenses. The capital reserve, this is for emergency or unforeseen expenses. So, say you're, you have a break in the main and you need to fix that as possible. This reserve provides the capital to pay for that expense while we make additional plans to to come up with a solution down the road. Next slide, please.
It's up, you may have lost your video Hannah.
Andrew, can we get that next slide?
I did, you may have lost your video.
Oh, I'm so sorry about that, all right, we're on the key outcomes of the financial planning process, yeah?
Yep, you're back.
Great, okay, sorry about that, everybody. So, the key outcomes of the financial, financial planning process are to forecast our annual water and sewer revenue increases, to come up with an optimal capital improvement plan financing strategy. So, will we be funding our capital projects with cash, with debt, or with a mixture of both? And this will complement the master plan study to be completed in the fall. And also, to determine the adequate cash reserves and debt service coverage, as we discussed. So ultimately, the financial planning process is a planning, provides a planning document for the future, so our decision makers have it to refer to. And a well-executed financial plan is a foundation that we can use to create solid rates on. This is a key to success at the very beginning of the process, as Andrew told us.
Thanks Hannah, that was, you know, kind of summary task two, I'm gonna move on to task three. There's certainly a relation with the financial plan and the capital improvement plan. And this is around the plant investment fees. So, just to kind of define these from the beginning, and many people are familiar with them, but these are one-time fees that are assessed to new development. And they're intended to recover the cost of expansionary growth-related infrastructure. It's assessed to newer increased development. So, today, if somebody has a connection and they have a 3/4 inch meter, maybe they do some redevelopment, and their demands and needs are higher, and they need a 1-inch meter, well, that would be increased development. Or, you know, a house gets, you know, demolished and a different structure gets put in its place and they have higher needs. So, for those increased capacity needs, and as we assess by meter size today, indicated by the size of the meter, or just complete new development. So, this, these aren't assessed to existing customers, these aren't assessed to existing connections to the system, it's for those that redevelop and expand or completely new. There's some rules, there's some criteria with Colorado revised statutes, as well as just legal precedents and case studies, some industry rules that we follow. One of them, just the legal one, is we cannot use it for O and M. For recurring, you know, chemicals personnel can't use plant investment fees. These are intended for capital and debt service. And in order for it, you know, essentially, this idea of a fee, there's three to four requirements that we look for when we sort of say, okay, we've got this impact or this demand. It's tied to the need, you know, the demands from the customer are leading towards the need to expand facility, go out and get new raw water to put in a pipeline or to expand the size of the pipeline. There's a benefit, so that, you know, there's a benefit that that customer is receiving from this fee and that, you know, they're having service. Or, we can't charge the fee and then not serve them or not connect them. It's proportional to the demand, so if somebody has higher demands, then the fee is in proportion to their demands. Today, this is by meter size. And lastly, that it doesn't discriminate based on, you know, boy, this person, we don't like this person, they're difficult to deal with, so we're gonna charge them more. Or, this type of business, we don't want, so we're gonna just charge them more, but it doesn't have to do with the impact in their system. And somebody with the same impact, we're going to charge them less because we like that business. This idea of discrimination, because it's a fee and it's contractual arrangement, these types of kind of criteria, what, some of the things we use when we go and evaluate the fee. There are a lot of different names for it, plant investment fees is certainly one of them, but there's several other names that can get confusing, particularly something like tap fees, where in many communities, this means the charge to physically connect. But, in, you know, other communities, this is the same type of fee that is called a plant investment fee. So, this just sort of covers, you know, next door, you know, down the road, they may call it system development charge, and typically, it's a similar type of a thing. Impact fees is maybe the most traditional name, or, you know, if you, you know, pull up industry guides, you know, that kind of a thing, impact fees may be one of them, but plant investment fees is certainly pretty close behind. So, in terms of the current fees, and these came out, in terms of those by meter size, starts with 3/4 inch, the majority of the connections we have on the system, new 3/4 inch tap will be assessed $18,505 for water and just under $17,000 for sewer. So, combined, it's well over $35,000. And then, as the meter size increases, so do the fees, that aspect of impact on the system, higher demands, and the sort of proportionality element that I just spoke to previously. There also is, and it's not included here, but a $2 per square foot additional charge for multifamily for those demands as well, that was implemented recently. In terms of methodology, I don't want to spend a lot of time here, but in essence, it's a time series. We look backwards when we have available facility capacity to serve new development or increased development for a period of time, we just expanded a treatment plan, or we have sufficient capacity in that treatment plan. Incremental is often the best approach when the future expansion is yet to come. That's in our near-term plan, next five, 10, maybe 20 years, we need to expand capacity. So, that unit cost of those facilities is the best proxy of what new development is costing in terms of, we may have built the original facility years ago at historical dollars, but it's gonna cost X today based on current conditions, you know, environmental requirements, bidding environment, technologies, whatever it happens to be, but it's forward-looking. The hybrid combines essentially both of them in a weighted average, and is often the best when we've got facilities with capacity in the ground, but we also have incremental facilities necessary, maybe a storage tank or upsizing that, or a new line or expanding a line, but we've got treatment plant capacity in the ground that's available. So, that often can be the most appropriate, because it sort of blends the two and picks up that we may have capacity in some elements, but not in others. In terms of, when we look at this question of capacity, utilities are items where we need to have the capacity meet the peak needs. And for water system, that's the max seasonal demands, and then also the extra capacity in say, the peak day or the peak hour. And so, we're gonna look at the capacity we have on those peak usage periods. Wastewater also follows this as well. Now, it may not be irrigation that leads to the peak period, it may be a different driver, maybe a little flatter year-round, or snow melts and there's groundwater infiltration to some of the sewer system, that may provide for the peak. But, we're gonna be looking at this element and really those peak demands. So, it's not necessarily, you know, average day demands, it's more around that peak season season that limits our capacity, particularly in the water system. We go through, you know, this assessment, and it's a lot more complicated than that, but ultimately, it comes down to a formula where we've got facilities either in the ground and what that value is today, or the net asset value is today, and we've got a certain amount of capacity, whether that's in the ground or future capacity, depending on the methodology. That will lead us with a dollar amount per, maybe million gallons a day, per gallon per day of that peak demand. And then, we take that cost and we marry it with the demand of an equivalent residential unit or an EQR. That may be based on meter size, and may be based on what a single-family detached residential customer, their impacts, or what we design the system around, what kind of peaks and peak usage we anticipate. And on the sewer side, it may be the influence requirements, and we go through kind of this mathematical expression, but developing the net asset value and understanding what the capacity is in order to do the formula, that's where a lot of the heavy lifting, the work is, and certainly the time around this task. Now, I'm gonna switch briefly into the rate structures themselves and rates, and then get into some Q and A and some discussion. So, this just summarizes the existing rate structure. The previous study that was also led by Reftellis back in, it was 15, rates that were adopted, the town has adjusted largely by about 3% the rates that were adopted coming out of that study. And so, whether it's quarterly or monthly, these are the rates that are in place today. There's a base fee and then a volumetric fee, and that applies to both water and sewer. We do understand, and certainly, there's some discussion around when there's multiple dwelling units and a multiple base fee, and off to the right, these bullets just sort of encapsulate the existing policy for how that may be defined, you know, what indicates that there's multiple dwelling units. Oh, there's more than one meter, there's more than one address, it's more than one kitchen. There's separate external entrances. These are all proxies for, in effect, additional demands placed on the system. And as I understand, this may be a policy that is being evaluated and something that we may be looking at as part of the study as well as looking at, you know, base fees, usage fees, and certainly are these sufficient and, you know, do we want to recover costs differently? Option A or option B that generate the same amount of revenue. That that'll be some of the crux of what we're handling in this task. Just a little bit of background and certainly, you know, volume rate structures have evolved based on technology, based on computer systems, based on metering technology. But overall, kind of on the left is where they started, where it was a flat rate for communities without meters or just as administrative kind of choice and large users had a declining block. So the more they use, the unit price went down. The pricing objectives have evolved too, from sending a pricing signal to ultimately the objective may be to elicit a behavioral change. And down at the bottom, you know, uniform rate structure, what the town has in place, you know, this provides price information. Use more, we're going to charge you more. And then we get into some of the individualized or inclining block rates are really geared around behavioral modification. There can be some challenges with these rate structures and certainly some differences, but the idea here is that, you know, indoor water is essentials and it's year round. It peaks less, so we're going to charge less for it. Then we get into outdoor and, you know, potentially maybe excessive or wasteful outdoor. We're going to charge more and more, less to recover revenue and more to send a pricing signal to customers that potentially influences their behavior. And may also reflect that, you know, if you irrigate a lot or use a lot in the peak period, we've got to build a system that's inefficient, that has capacity for that peak period, but may be unused in in other parts of the year. And, you know, it's effectively idle and there's a cost to that. So, you know, we may price that and recover that from user customer. So these are some of the, you know, of what objective are we trying to solve and what kind of pricing information? And then over on the other end is, you know, is there, can our billing system handle it? Do we have the staffing resources? You know, if we went with what Boulder has an individualized water budget, can our billing system handle it? What's the cost of having a billing system that can handle it? It's more complex. We're going to get more questions. Do we have staff capacity? Is there, you know, there's an administrative element as well that that factors in into these as well as, you know, if it's implemented, well, then we've got to administer it and we want to be aware of these advantages and disadvantages on the front end. In terms of wastewater, it often can be a little more simplified. And especially when there's not like large users or industrial users where it's often more a question of what do we want to recover from the base of the fixed charge? Concepts of, you know, minimal allowance. Are we trying to recover a certain amount or percent of revenue or certain types of costs from the fixed charge? And as we, you know, get into non-residential or larger customers or multiple dwelling units, are there some additional costs and how, you know, do we want to recover those? And on the volume side, you know, that's the other element, you know, as people use more, we want to charge them, you know, a rate that recovers more from them in proportion to their use. It may be based on the volume that we have to treat and just sort of the hydraulic capacity, but also the strength. So if you're a higher strength customer and some communities, that may be a brewery that's discharging the system without industrial or onsite pretreatment. And those strengths and those high discharges come to the treatment plant and there's costs to deal with them and to administer those and and remove the organic compounds and remove the solids or the ammonia. And so there may be a strength based element to the volume rate as well. So with that, that's sort of the end of the prepared slides and I appreciate everybody's, you know, kind of saving questions, but we'll, you know, certainly turn it back to Karen or or the board in in terms of discussion or questions to what you just heard or maybe questions you had in in terms of our study.
I'll defer to the mayor, Mayor Larson, if you want to lead the discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to start by just thank you and Andrew and Hannah. Thank you so much for the the in-depth question or introduction to the rate study and all the pieces that are going to come there. The biggest question I'm going to have is you mentioned early on, you talked about a schedule. I think, believe you said we're currently in month one of the six month study. Given sort of our current situation with COVID, et cetera, how much interaction, the in-person stuff is actually going to be able to occur and is there, you know, is all that in-person stuff with town staff and with the town board or is there a public input?
I moved back to the slide and we've got primarily, we had go to meeting, you know, kind of this type of WebEx sort of interaction. We did anticipate or at least scoped an in-person kickoff meeting. We're certainly flexible and can can complete that with staff remotely. And, you know, then there's some levels of interaction, but as as many of us have been or, you know, this meeting is an example. You know, we're flexible and able to do these through technology and similar mechanisms. We're having this meeting. We did not intend, we did not include in the scope, you know, direct public involvement or, you know, sort of public meetings. Really, you know, it's this meeting to get some input at the beginning and then certainly as we work through the study, but it's not really towards the end that we had anticipated or scoped to be back in front of the board.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to open up to the rest of the Board of Trustees. If anyone has questions for Andrew and Hannah, please speak up, members of the board.
This is Trustee Taylor. So I have a few questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very helpful. First question, what information comprises the input to this study? And how much of that information does Reftellis gather as opposed to town staff gather?
There's a variety of operational data, financial data, historical sort of customer usage or billing data. And, you know, depending on the scope of the study, you know, we're not going to ask for all the records the town has or, you know, go through a kind of an elaborate process. It's geared around kind of the scope and the things that we'll need. So, you know, some of it is just some of the historical reports or, you know, maintenance records of the plant, you know, this amount of flow came in, you know, this year, this, you know, we track this information. Here are the strengths and that'll tie into some of the wastewater evaluation. A lot of it's budget and financial data. And JVA is also ultimately going to be kind of a source of it is is the benefit of really having the master plan and the rate study being completed in a parallel fashion is that we can kind of rely on each other and JVA and Reftellis have have done these types of kind of parallel studies for multiple communities. And we really kind of leverage the other's area of expertise where, you know, we may have an issue or question on capacity that we turn to, you know, and initially we'll turn to Chris and Karen and and staff. But if JVA can help provide that answer, they're already engaged. They're already going through and evaluating facilities. And there's a lot of economies of scale there. But, you know, big picture, I mean, at some level, you know, capital plans, asset data, historical financial information, budgets. And then we get into some operational information and customer data to support our analysis and evaluation. We also, and this is built in, you know, you saw in the deliverables, that we we work closely with town staff and, you know, others in the case of JVA throughout this process. So, you know, we're not going to collect the data initially, go back to our office for three months and come out with the answer. It's staged so that, you know, we're financial planning process ultimately becomes iterative. And, you know, here's the plan, here's capital plan. When we show the impact, maybe we're going to look for other funding sources or I know the town pursues grants very aggressively. So grants may be an element of, you know, a component of the program or scenario we evaluate. Well, what what does that do? So that gives you a little bit, you know, we're going to ask for some initial information, but it's an iterative process as we go throughout and working closely with Chris, Karen and others at the town.
All right. Very fine. Thank you very much. So does Reftellis have any experience with communities that designate some of their reserve funds for citizens who through financial adversity are unable to pay their bills?
We do. There's a variety of kind of mechanisms that different communities may want to look at or, you know, different policies when it comes to whether it's, you know, kind of shut offs or late payments or I think in this case, customer assistance program. And we helped Longmont evaluate and then Longmont ran with this and implemented a direct customer assistance program. It didn't exist. It was as we were going through water rate recommendations back in fourteen, there was certainly concern that some within the community had a difficult time affording the increased bill. And so worked through and established a customer assistance program to basically provide that assistance. There's some funding that comes from, I believe, the utility. There's other mechanisms where maybe the general fund or other communities may rely on nonprofit sectors to provide that assistance, but it's certainly something that we're very experienced doing in, you know, really all, you know, variety of elements, including evaluating advantages or disadvantages and funding sources for customer assistance programs to help those that, you know, have financial challenges and otherwise aren't able to pay the monthly bill or may not be for a period of time.
Finally, you said the PIF for a multi-family dwelling was higher than for single family. And I'm kind of wondering, this is just me being stupid. I'm kind of wondering why that isn't simply determined by the tap size.
Well, and this, this is an issue that a lot of our clients are evaluating and and while meter size based fees are the most common for the plant investment fee or the, you know, similarly term fee. There's some downsides to it. There's a lot of advantages to it, but one of the downsides is that within the different sort of meter ranges, a variety of demands can be met. And the larger the meter size you go, kind of that range of demands we can serve kind of increases. It's somewhat exponential. And so some communities are reevaluating how this is assessed and Hannah and I are working with Jackson, Wyoming. This is also an issue in a study that we completed a couple of years ago for Mount Crest de Butte where, you know, meter size just isn't as indicative of the potential demands. And then also there may be increased demands where customers, you know, not increasing their meter size, but the demands on their system go up. And that's where alternative measures, whether it's, you know, in the case of, you know, square footage or different demands or how an equivalent residential user is defined in communities that have a lot of seasonal visitors or just, you know, it's not as ubiquitous. I live in Littleton and kind of single family residential, there's some variance, but it's a little smaller than it is in other communities where there's kind of a wide range. And so in the case of the existing policy, that that additional amount is really intended to say, wow, you know, there's increased development, there's redevelopment, there's increased demands, but we're not picking up for it by the the charge by meter size that's assessed. And, you know, as we look at the plant investment fees and their sufficiency, I anticipate that, you know, the multi-family impacts, this is certainly something that I know we've been asked to focus in on as well. So, you know, the current policy is where we're going to start. We kind of want to understand that before we, you know, make a recommendation around what we think is, you know, maintaining it or maybe there's a different way to go about the assessments and and, you know, understand the challenge and then put forward maybe some options and ultimately some recommendations for the board to consider.
Thank you very much. That's it for me.
Trustee, just wanted to say thank you, Trustee Taylor. Those were questions I had and just following up, I have a couple myself, but just following up on on that question, I guess I'm still not fully understanding how it is that the increase, that like whatever increased demand like a multi-family dwelling or accessory dwelling units had, wouldn't be addressed simply by charging for the the extra use. I don't really understand why that wouldn't be the case.
So trustee comes this mail and Taylor, this was a long discussion, probably a year, year and a half ago at the Board of Trustees where we instituted the square footage additional charge. And it came about because of, as Andrew was saying, there were some concerns regarding the number of users on a given size of pipe. And so this is, this was something that we spent probably three months discussing at the Board of Trustees level and was passed a year and a half ago. I'd have to look at the minutes to see exactly when, as a way of trying to there was concern that things like the tungsten village was not paying their fair share. That was something we heard a lot of and we did us, you know, we looked into a study and we looked at a lot of what other communities were doing for those large multi-unit houses or housing developments. And that's where that two foot, two dollar per square foot addition came out of, just to give you some context.
Most of the square footage in those apartments are pretty small.
It is, and it's it's not paid by the users. It's paid by the developer.
So the entire building, but each unit has its own base fee, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that would be with
But this is, we're talking, this is talking about plant investment fees, not
But we're talking about why multi-family
They're two different things. Those are the planned investment fees versus the O and M fees. The planned investment fees are where the two dollar per square foot and that's paid by the developer, not by the person who is residing within the unit. Can I just remind everyone, sorry, not just a sidebar, because we're getting a lot of cross chatter and some background noise. Please mute yourself if you're not participating in the discussion.
So just to help me, Trustee Taylor, understand this a little bit better. I understand, I think I understand the PIF as being what is being paid for somebody digging that trench, hooking it up to the piping system, verifying that everything is working and not leaking, and then also kind of reserving for the future, a certain amount of resources from our facility. Is that, is that a fair assessment of the PIF?
It maybe is a little more focused on the last mile or kind of connecting that user. It is intended to recover not just the pipe. I mean, we got treatment plants, wells, sources fly, reservoirs, storage tanks. You know, the suite of the system or on the wastewater side. So, I mean, but, you know, it physically is connecting, but it's really the capital facilities that are not just, you know, that the pipe to get to the customer, but everything is entailed.
The resources that that pipe is going to be demanding over the next forty or fifty years of its operation.
Yes, that, yeah, no, that's a good way of putting it. The resources as well. I agree.
This is trustee again. Sorry. Sorry to keep harping on about this. I guess it's just because I don't fully understand it. And I suppose we will at the, at the end of the study, understand it a lot better. But in that case, it it sounds like the the PIF fee essentially negates the base fee. Like what, why do we also need the base fee? I guess that's what I don't fully comprehend.
So the PIF fee and the base fee are two entirely, are funding two entirely separate things. The PIF fee is for, basically for making sure that we have sufficient reserves. You know, our current water and sewer funds have reserves of two plus million dollars. So that in the future, when the need is there to build, to expand, let's just talk wastewater treatment plant. When we need to expand the wastewater treatment plant, the PIF fees help fund that expansion. Base fee that and PIF fees cannot be used for day to day operations of the wastewater treatment plant. Base fee and usage fees are what funds the day to day usage. That's what pays our operators and that's what pays the chemicals and pays for the the water rights. So the two entirely, you can almost think of them as two separate funds. One is based on future capital improvement and one is on keeping the water flowing to the user. And that latter is where the base fee and usage fee is part of.
I understand. Add on to that, there's replacements, you know, there's an element of expanding or establishing the capacity of the capacity to provide for new development, but then there's ongoing capital replacements, maintenance to operate and maintain the facility. And, and that's where, you know, when it's new and we expand it, you know, the plant investment fees are intended to really cover that capital expansion, that initial for, you know, the new system or for the expanded system. And then base fees and volumetric fees, the recurring charges is what pays operation and maintenance types of things that plant investment fees legally cannot be used for, personnel costs, supplies, chemicals, all the things with maintaining and running and providing the service, but also maintenance or reading the bill, sending the bill, customer accounting. And, and these are some of the, you know, elements, you know, as evaluated in the study in 15, things have, you know, systems evolved a bit, communities grown, demands may have changed a bit. So, you know, the intent is really to, you know, evaluate, confirm, you know, how we're covering our revenues, you know, what costs are we trying to recover from the base and the volume charge? Is it still fair? Does it make sense? You know, is it in proportion to the demands? And that's some of the kind of weighing that we go through when we look at, at rate design. And as I understand it, and maybe some of these questions that have come up in some of the discussion, I think that, you know, there's, there's questions about maybe these multiple dwelling units and how if you've got more than one, you pay a multiple of the base fee, you know, is, is that something as a community we want to maintain or is maybe there an alternative around that that looks different than the structure does today? And so I, you know, I'm not coming with all the answers today, you know, we're, we're early part of the, the, the study, but we're certainly wanting to understand kind of what the challenges are, what, what the objectives may be on the front end so that, you know, as we complete the study, we are geared around meeting those challenges and coming up with some alternatives that maybe meet those challenges in different ways. But at the end of the day, they recover the same amount of revenue so that, you know, we can fund and maintain the system we have and have a sustainable utility and utilities for customers today and into the future.
And I'm sorry, I, I thank you for that answer. I just have two more questions. One, I think is pretty quick. You had that slide about the assigning value to end uses of water. And I was just wondering if we would get kind of a breakdown at the end of this study about sort of the sanitary, economic, recreational, outdoor aesthetic uses that you guys find in net.
You know, I, I don't know that we've gone through and tried to price these out and quantify these. So I, that's not something we're intended to scope, to do, but this is more kind of some of the conceptual, you know, concepts and when we're looking at essential necessary use versus more discretionary use and how those may be priced. But yeah, it's not intended to kind of come back and say, you know, assign a dollar amount to this, 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 and this, just for Neverland, this is a little bit more bigger picture. But certainly as we go through and we evaluate indoor usage, year-round usage, peak usage, and, and how those relationships occur for different types of users, well, you know, this, this picture does get painted a bit, but maybe not quite in, you know, assigning an exact dollar amount to, to all these end uses.
Thanks. And just following on from that, the, I think, you know, what kind of remains my top priority here in a lot of ways, I think that conservation is very important to our, our town in particular and rate structures that actually do promote conservation, especially considering these sorts of, you know, the assigning value to end uses slide here. I think we'd all be very interested in seeing multiple models that maybe you guys can come up with for how to promote conversation, conservation, because I know that incline block rates don't necessarily always do that. And I know there are even different ways of, you know, implementing incline blocks. And I'm, I'm wondering if you have, if you guys have any thoughts on that and on whether or not you've ever recommended implementing like a progressive rate structure where it's just the more use that you have, the higher you pay, or if there are kind of ways that you've seen it work for behavioral change in, in water use.
I mean, it's certainly an issue that we encounter often. And I, I think that, you know, I don't want to present a solution without fully vetting and understanding all of, of the, the pieces. So, I mean, it's good to know and not a surprise that conservation is important. In terms of kind of a progressive rate structure, one of the things that we, we need to balance when we look at rates and fees is that it's not a tax. So sometimes when there's elements of, you know, if your house is worth more, you're going to get a higher water rate than somebody who has a lower value house, that really, you know, you know, that starts looking like a tax and less like a fee. So just strictly based on income and not based on demands or impacts to the system or kind of system costs, you know, sometimes that can, can go beyond what a fee is and start resembling a tax. And, and that, that may be, you know, there, there, there may be a tax that the, the town wants to implement that helps, you know, fund some of these outside of the enterprise fund or complement the rates. But there, there's sort of a process for, you know, getting a tax in place in Colorado. And so we just want to be careful that the rate structure doesn't, you know, effectively get deemed by somebody has a tax or get challenged and we lose this relationship that's based on use and demand and impacts of the system and maybe based on things that are, you know, how much money you make, well, we're going to charge you more or we're going to charge you less and finding a balance, kudos. So it's a consideration, but I'm not aware of like a progressive and income-based rate structure too much. We did help.
Just to clarify, Andrew.
Yep.
Only talking progressive in relation to water use, not in, in terms of income or anything like that.
Okay, I apologize. I should have clarified that. I'm sorry. I, I heard progressive and I thought of more of a sliding scale based on income. So my apologies there.
I also want to back up Eric about the sustainability aspect of water conservation and coming up with a rate structure that can accommodate that. I think now is more than, ever more important that people learn to conserve water. So if you have examples when you're working on the rate study of other communities that have used that kind of system, like a tiered system where, like as you were talking about people who water lawns and water gardens or use a lot of water for other reasons. And then there's the base of like essential water usage and how that could be at an affordable rate so that essential water usage doesn't cost an arm and a leg, but after a certain point you use too much. I know other, other communities do it and that is something that I would be interested in seeing in the rate study.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions from members of the boards, Board of Trustees? Not hearing or seeing any. So Andrew, Hannah, again, thank you so much for the, the presentation and for fielding our questions. I know we're all really looking forward to seeing the results of this rate study as soon as we can. And I think, I, you know, I know that you guys have done this for us before and really addressed some of the questions that are coming from the Board of Trustees. I know that, I know from experience, last time we did this rate study, we were presented with several models that included, I believe, you know, progressive rates for usage, just as trustees Corvallin and Coombs Ismail were looking for. So I'm hoping we, we can see those options again this time, maybe take a little bit more of a, an aggressive stance on that than the board did back in 2014 or 15, whenever we did this before. So thank you very much. And yeah, let us know whatever there is we can do to continue helping with this as study as it goes on.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you guys for having us and we're excited about the study and appreciate the input and the feedback and the questions today. And yeah, we're, we're off, we'll be off and running and look forward to speaking with you guys in, as we get further along in the study. So thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, let me see if I can take back the screen to our agenda.
I hope that I can give it back.
Andrew, have you stopped sharing?
Then.
I think I can.
Oh, I thought I did. Okay. Okay, good.
There we go.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Thanks, Andrew. I think you're scrolling too far. There we go. Mary, Larry, are you still?
I think he's muted.
Yeah, Chris, I think you're muted.
Suddenly, I'm back again. Suddenly the spacebar on muting stopped working on my computer that I'd been using as my way of making sure that I wasn't filling airwaves, but.
I'm telling you, it's the update, it's weird. I don't know.
Probably it. Anyway, so yes, next item is the update from the NDDA Parking Committee, and I believe we have a member of that parking committee, Ron Mitchell, online with us to discuss this.
And you have Andrew Duer as well, they're both on the committee and they will, I believe, co-introduce.
Then I will just hand over to them. Welcome, guys.
With the value of JVA's analysis of Neverland and we, we thought that kind of a hybrid approach would be the best way to go about it. And in, in going through that, we realized that no engineering fees included in the JVA put forth. So we need to, and at the last NDDA meeting, Ron and I discussed an RFP, but what, what needs to happen is it needs to be done by a professional civil engineer. Now, in the spirit of keeping it local, what, what I believe we need to do is an RFP out to not only JVA, but just to design the actual, to do the water analysis. JVA. We've got companies in Louisville with three employees that can do this job. We requested pricing from JVA. JVA. And, you know, in range as possible. And I think for the green plan on, or Big Springs.
Andrew, Andrew, this is, Andrew, this is Chris.
Number two, you can call it.
You're, you're breaking up very badly. It's been ringing and out and I've got about half the words you've said so far. Maybe come a little closer to the screen.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Better right now, yeah.
Okay. We have not received any costs of civil engineering from JVA to do any of the associated engineering work of the parking proposals that they have produced for the town. I've asked them for an estimate. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's much better when you're closer to the screen like that. I think.
Okay, all right. I'm trying not to fall into the computer here, but.
I also wonder if turning off your video might improve your bandwidth.
Could be. Okay, is that better?
Sounding a lot better right now, thanks.
Okay. So we have no idea what JVA is going to charge the town to do the civil engineering work on any of these parking projects. JVA is a large company and I think it would be in the town's best interest to put this back out to create an RFP for the civil work for a simple project in front of the Black Forest.
I, I'd just like to make a statement about that, Andrew. I didn't realize that you were asking JVA for anything like that. That really needs to come through me. And they are engineer on record and so they actually are engineers for the town, not necessarily the DDA. And so I think, and as far as them being local, they're, they're based in Boulder. So I'm a little concerned about this conversation because I don't remember this being discussed during the meeting or direction from the DDA board to put it out for an RFP to have the whole thing started over again. So I'm, I'm just going to ask you to please deal more with what was agreed at the DDA board meeting that you're supposed to be presenting tonight. And Ron, are you on the same page with what I'm saying?
I can speak to this also, Karen.
Pardon?
Karen, I can speak to this also.
Before we go further down this rabbit hole, let's just bring this back to what is our goal for this discussion, this information items that presented, I mean, there's maps in here of a project that were being presented, what this project was going to look like, not necessarily yet who was going to do it. What is our goal?
So the goal is we need pricing on civil engineering.
I think if I may inject Chris's comment was a little broader than that, Andrew. And the objective in terms of this is overall to increase parking in some manner in the best way possible. And what we've determined is that we favor a hybrid approach to one section of the three that JVA presented. And we've worked that over and that's what we presented our ideas to the DDA was that only the portion of the three that JVA presented, which was Big Springs, Conger and Lakeview, we want to work solely on Big Springs.
And that's the maps we see here is this is the, this is the piece of, it's these two satellite images are the Big Springs pieces, which the DDA is interested in pursuing parking project upon. And I noticed there's a lot of notes in here about things would I, that appear to be within these drawings that you're saying are not going to be part of the project. So maybe you can go through what this, what the scope of this project is in terms of, because I see sidewalks being moved, I see drainage, I see parking spaces and reworked entry-out exit ways. Let's talk about that and then we can, you know, start thinking about, talking about what the cost is and whether or not JVA is the right or whatever, how we make this happen.
Okay, so the ultimate goal is to get a grade 18-inch concrete pipe from the, when Chris and I discussed it, from basically just, this is contingent on Steve Carew and Stephen Tebow agreeing on one point of ingress and egress of their properties. There, then we would bury concrete pipe going west. There would be a cleanout mid-span kind of directly across from Doc Camerata's office. We're putting perpendicular parking in with a sidewalk or a mixed, mixed-use pathway. And then trying to paint a, get a right-hand turning lane or a, you know, straight and right-hand lane and a left-hand lane, if that, if that makes sense. Did I get that right, Ron?
Yes, you did. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's, we, we have an open ditch. Tebow wants to develop. Tebow wants to develop the Black Forest. He's going to do that eventually. We have to deal with our stormwater. In order to do that, we need to bury concrete pipe and put a sidewalk, and we can gain parking. This, you know, Neverland needs to do this in tandem with the adjacent and the adjacent property owners need to work together to pull this off as well.
So really, tonight what's happening, Mayor Larson, is at the DDA Board meeting, they agreed that they wanted to bring their ideas of basically, like you mentioned, the concepts that were originally presented by JVA to the Board last year. They have a sort of, they've tweaked one of the, one of the options. They're presenting it to the Board of Trustees tonight, looking for a nod to go forward and bring back this to you as an action item with a resolution tied to the funding. But the budget itself still needs to be fleshed out, although they have a pretty good one included in this presentation.
No, but it lacks other engineering costs.
Right, but that is just.
It says right here, engineering fees of $20,000.
Yeah. Andrew, I am really concerned about what you're bringing up without the backing of your board. And so I think the concern that you might have is something that is a detail that really should have been discussed at the Board level of the DDA before you presented this to the Board of Trustees. And right now, this is an information item, looking for direction from the Board of Trustees to bring it back as an action item in the future. And what you're discussing could be worked out with the DDA prior to your bringing it back.
Okay, can I, I want to go back just a little bit here to this, this plan, because there's a lot of notes in aim about meetings that have occurred and things that have changed in the plan. But then I see, what I see is the drawings. I see on the drawings, we have four entry-exit points. I don't know if the Xanax thing's working. I'm trying it for the first time. Let me know if it is. Yeah, so I see four entry-exit points. You guys are saying something about not having those? So are these drawings not actually the project?
There could be additional parking spots gained if, so again, you know, I'm not trying to be out of bounds here. I'm just trying to tell you, you know, my version of my view of what needs to happen for this parking plan if we want to get additional spots. And for our discussion with Chris is that Steve Carew and Stephen Tebow need to agree on that where you've got in the middle those two, you know, basically two in-and-outs, that needs to become one in-and-out.
And so we're saying that that would free up three additional spots in addition to what is on this current plan.
Because we were trying to, we look at this through the lens of how much money it costs to build a parking spot. And also deal with stormwater drainage and that needs to be built and a sidewalk.
Okay, so that was sorry, that was one of the questions in here, but there was also another comment that said there will be no sidewalks added by this project. Yet I see sidewalks, you know, I see a sidewalk here, whoops, here, I see sidewalks on the corners. So are you saying those are being removed from the project?
Ron, yeah, the intent is to have parking. I don't want to talk over you. The intent is to have parking spots and sidewalks in a multi-modal pathway.
Right up against. Mark on the north side of the street, Chris, just the south side of the street.
Yeah, I guess I'm just very confused about what the scope of this project is. I understand the goal is to work on stormwater flow, and that's this, you know, we have these grates here, you know, we have grates with the trick out, and then we've got some big stormwater, you know, replacing the ditch. Replacing that ditch with a number of straight-in parking and apparently a parallel parking.
Yeah, and putting concrete-beded pipe and burying the concrete pipe, so there's not a ditch.
Right, so that was kind of the original scope of this project. It was the addition of parking spaces for the use of anyone in town, not tied to the Black Forest or HubNet. These are open for any user, and that was the original scope of this project.
Correct.
Okay, so we see that, and there's some confusion about maybe being able to add actually extra spaces by consolidating entry and exit points. That's, that's an additional, you know, stretch goal, I guess. And then I guess the other question is, we have this addition of a turn lane off of Big Springs Drive, which seems to be at the request of a single property owner. Is that correct?
Yes, and Chris, I'd like to say I desperately was trying to get in on public comment, and I couldn't. So I would like to inject a little statement here if I could.
Wait, 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 don't, let's, let's, I'm trying to make progress here. Well, you can say things, but let's keep to, I'm trying to get the scope of this project and understand what is being discussed here tonight. So.
Okay, you've got it. We're trying to create primarily in front of the Black Forest and the HubNet a drainage system, parking space, and a sidewalk. And we worked out the four drains contingent on Carew and Tebow, where we could pick up two or three more spaces if they have a common entry-exit. And that eliminates anything from the north side of the street. Very small scope, reduced scope, to look at just this portion of the, of the options that JVA came up with.
Okay, so just the parking, the sidewalk in front of the Black Forest, and the drainage ditch. So that is not including this additional turn lane and the relocation of sidewalks on the north side.
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
We want to do a small job, get it done, do it well, see how it goes, and then move on to another project. We only had three weeks to work on this as a committee. We were appointed three weeks ago because one DDA member didn't renew his term, didn't go back on the Board, and the other declined to continue on the committee.
Okay, so.
So we didn't have a lot of time to work on it. I should say this too, JVA courteously, without a charge, did rework it with us. So we tried the best we could to bring those three elements to that particular area for this proposal.
Okay, and so the water and sidewalk on the north side of the street, oh, sorry, on the south side of the street by the Black Forest, and that is what this opinion of probable costs covers.
Mm-hmm. However, we didn't see bedding material included in the opinion of probable costs for the concrete. We didn't see, I mean, I see the engineer's fee at the bottom 12%. And I also think that this project is going to end up costing more than, you know, this is an opinion of probable cost. So what I would recommend is that, you know, we need to dial in and get, you know, pricing and put it out to bid.
Okay, well, also, I want to, I want to mention, Chris, that at the bottom of that estimate that's on the page there is a very lengthy disclaimer as to opinion of probable cost, which recommends a professional estimator.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, the legalese that covers it. I mean, so I would like to offer this, you know, I've been talking here for a while, trying to just get my own head around it. So I apologize to the members of the Board of Trustees, but I'd like to just open this up a chance. Any Board of Trustees like to weigh in on this? I'll just tell you, my current feeling on this is something that the DDA Parking Board really needs to go back and kind of wrap our heads around better. Come back maybe with clearer indication of what's actually going to happen in terms of how many spaces are we going to gain? Because there's to be plus or minus going on here. But I'd like to hear from the rest of the Board of Trustees, and particularly open it up if they have any questions for Andrew or Ron about this proposal and what's in the packet.
I have something to say. I like the spirit of it. I have parked on that side of the road many, many times, and there is a water issue going on there. I don't, I've always been trying to figure out where it's coming from, because it'll be there when it's dry and it's not even raining. So there must be some kind of spring or something. I'm not sure. So I do like the idea of dealing with that and creating more parking. But when I just did the math without adding in the potential extra spots from consolidating the driveways, I think I only saw like maybe five new spots being created from this. But, and so I do agree that you guys should open this up for a bid, because $187,000 seems like a really, a ton of money to me, but I don't work in this, so maybe you guys think that's normal. I'm like, does that, do we want, where is this money coming from? Is this DDA budget?
Tanya, this is Karen Garrity. The money would come from the Tiff funding, the DDA Tiff funding. But I just want to be clear about something here. What the Board asked the JVA to do last year was to come up with some different options, an estimated cost. So JVA has not said that they're going to come in and build it for this price. They're trying to give us pricing so that we can put together an RFP. But it's going to need more work, which is what basically Andrew and Ron and the mayor have led us, you know, down that path to understand that this really needs to be fleshed out further. But I just want to be clear, it's not JVA saying, here's, we're going to build it for you, and here's what it's costing. They're trying to put a cost estimate together for us. But when we do do an RFP for building it, we have a good idea of what the cost will be. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I just, it doesn't hurt to get other estimates.
You, we will. That's what an RFP will do.
Right.
But it's good for us to have an idea of what our engineer, you know, our engineer on record is basically estimating the cost to be. So that when we do an RFP and we start getting bids, we're coming from an informed place. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question, Karen? Karen?
Sure.
Do you think it is a conflict of interest for JVA to provide civil engineering services for this project because they are the town's engineer?
They've done civil engineering for us for other projects, and they are our town engineers. So I'm not sure why it would be a conflict.
That's their purpose.
That's why we did an RFP process to hire them as our, we just completed that just months ago, where they were hired again as our, as our, and it was quite a vetting process, very public as well, so.
I understand.
But Andrew, I think you're getting caught up in a detail that is not, we're not even there yet. Right now, what you guys were supposed to do, according to the direction from the DDA Board, was to bring this idea to the BOT, show the design elements, take their feedback, bring it back to the DDA, and then come back as an action item. This isn't an action item, it's an information item. But the way that you guys are presenting it is making us feel like maybe you're not even ready for it to be an information item.
Well, I would like to give some information to Tanya. The number of spaces that we thought we would get increased over what is there now is not a lot. It's between eight and 11.
Oh, that's a bit off by counting.
But we don't know exactly yet because it has to be surveyed.
Right, there's a water, there's definitely a water problem on that street.
Right, and here's the thing, a parking space just on a, if you started with gravel and you paved it, the cost probably would be somewhere between $3,000 to $8,000 space, with a lot of variables in there. We're going to end up probably over $15,000 to $18,000 of space because of having to put in this drainage system to gain those spaces. Now, the big question here is, is it worth it to solve the drainage problem and get the spaces? And we don't know yet. If this, if this comes up with a $200,000 ticket, I wouldn't recommend doing it. And that's why we're really studying carefully, and we want to know what we think we're going to be able to do for this. Because $16,000 for parking space is just about a half of what you'd pay for a parking space in a building if you had a parking structure. So we're looking to solve three problems. Increase pedestrian and multimodal walkway. That's an addition that has, helps with the parking, augments the parking. And we're looking for drainage. And so with those three elements, we've got combined cost that is going to be substantially more for parking space than your normal space would be. And then the question becomes, and we got to get to that answer before we put out bids, is it worth it to do it?
Yeah, it makes sense.
So Ron, Andrew, question for you guys is, what are you guys, what is the, what is the DDA looking for from the Board of Trustees tonight?
Well, this was an information item, and we're trying to present to you what our philosophy is about what we should do as a new committee, and what we don't want to do is bite off more than we can chew. So we're saying we've reduced the scope of this. Here's what the scope is, these three things. May we go forward? Do you think this has a credible plan as it is, rudimentary as it is? We'll go forward, do a lot more work if you like it. But we don't want to, we don't want to take on trying to go through and design four projects on three different streets.
Okay, so let's hear from the rest of the Board of Trustees. You know, Tanya and I have asked some questions. What is, is the DDA working on adding additional parking spaces and dealing with the stormwater situation along Big Springs Drive between the Peak-to-Peak and Conger, a project we want to see them continue to work on?
This is Trustee Taylor. I agree with, with Trustee Corvlin that, yeah, it would be nice to increase the parking there and improve the suing, the water issues. But this is very, very preliminary. I'm not, I'm not, I go through this every day where I'm reviewing projects. And this is, this is a project that is not actionable. And so my feeling is that before it comes before the BOT, it kind of needs to be actionable. We have to be making a decision as to whether we're going to do this or not. And as to moving forward, I think this could be turned into a proposal that is clear and actionable with a little more work. I mean, it's fairly clear, just looking at the drawing, that this was not made professionally. And it would be nice to have it done a little more carefully, so with, and associated with text that really tells us precisely what is being proposed. Because I, like Mayor Larson, am a little puzzled as to exactly what's being proposed. There are four or five concepts here, and they aren't really put together in a way that I can assess well. So I would encourage the DDA to come back to the BOT, but with something a little more firm, so that we are able to make a decision as to what is actually being proposed to resolve the problem.
Can I just make a statement here? This is Karen Garrity. I just want to remind everybody a little bit of the history of what is happening tonight. Is that last year in the fall, the Board of, of what is happening tonight is that last year in the fall, the Board of Trustees, um, approved for the DDA to spend a certain amount of money. I think it was around $7,000 for JVA to put some very simple conceptual plans together for parking that included very rough estimates for the cost. So that is basically what this information is based on. And the DDA was tasked with coming back to the Board of Trustees with their recommendation of the best option. So that's where we're at tonight. So the DDA did what they were, they were approved to do, which was JVA was hired to come up with these very conceptual drawings with rudimentary budgets attached to it. And they're making their recommendation to you. And so that, like you all are saying, this is very rudimentary. But this is what the DDA was tasked to do and what JVA, JVA was asked to do as well.
Further say that we're not going to, I wouldn't spend any more money on engineering work if we don't get a nod that this is the direction that you want us to go.
Well, and the reality is I don't think the DDA has been approved to spend more money on. So that would have to come back to the Board in a resolution when it becomes an action.
I, I was just talking emotional energy, Karen. Sorry there. Not, not, you know, financial.
Well, I mean, I like the idea of getting more parking. I don't like necessarily the price tag at the moment. I don't know. I don't know the other options that you're presented with, um, to compare it. Like you're saying, this is the best one you saw. So I'm taking your word for it. But I mean, there is a, there could be more parking there and it could be, the water is a problem. So I've given you an emotional nod, but I'm not necessarily loving that price tag.
Neither is Ron.
That's right. That, we're very concerned about the price tag.
Yeah, this is trustee Kumsesmile. Uh, uh, my, my precise problem is that I don't know what the other options were because I wasn't on the BOT at the time. And so, you know, this is the only thing that's in front of us and it's a very modest increase in parking spaces for quite a high price tag. Maybe it's more of a sidewalks project. And in that sense, I think it's an interesting project because there's clearly an issue there, uh, with the water. So, um, I, I, but I'm not sure that it's a parking project necessarily. The, at parking seems quite ancillary to, to the major costs that this one. So yeah, I, I feel like we need a more specific, uh, kind of a plan here also because just the mention of the, the right-hand turn lane within this aim kind of puts me off saying like, go forward with this particular information item. Like, I'd like to see a much more clarified, uh, you know, narrow, narrow and scope information item that says to us, this is exactly what we feel like we should pursue doing. You know, can we proceed from here? And then maybe, uh, say yes to it, but I just feel like it's too loose, uh, tip to give a nod for.
And this is trustee Danforth. And I agree. I think, uh, working on kind of the scope because I think the roadway, the adding the turn lane and everything. Maybe is a bit too much to include in, in having these parking spaces created. And I would, I would like to see, um, PBO and, and the Hub Med property. I would like to see them share that, that one entryway there. Um, because having those two in-out lanes is a little confusing. And seems, seems a bit unnecessary. So if we can get them to cooperate with that, that'd be excellent to get more parking there. So I, I think, you know, I'm all in favor of you guys moving forward and, and, and getting this kind of locked down into more specific project with some better numbers and, uh, can't wait to see this come back before us.
Yeah. And there was also, just let me add, we talked with Chris and he pointed out the condition of Big Springs. Various divots and humps then, and I know this is a kind of an issue, so information item, but repaving Big Springs from virtually, um, the corner of Conger all the way down, uh, because of the existing condition of the street. So, you know, we're. I'm a general contractor. I see things through the lens of planning and layers and critical paths. And so that's all, that's all I can offer. And, you know, I appreciate you, uh, Board of Trustees listening to our, our presentation and, um, you know, we'll get back at it. And we'll, we'll keep working on something that, uh, can integrate both stormwater, pavement, parking, sidewalks, and, uh, traffic flow.
I think.
That's Ron Mitchell here. I'd like to make a comment about the right turn lane that was in here. Uh, and this is ancillary and I'll make it quick. Many people in town, locals go out of the shopping center at the east exit, go around up Conger to the south and then turn west on the Big Springs and then make a right turn and go, uh, north on, uh, 119. And part of having a right turn lane there, and I, I saw the one letter about the congestion, uh, that was part of public comment. And I, that was what I wanted to comment on. Another project would be to see if we could get the cooperation and do a task and make Big Springs one way for a period of time so that everybody went out of the shopping center, uh, at the east entrance. So up Conger and then out on Big Springs to eliminate the congestion of that screwy intersection with rental way and the offset with, uh, Lakeview. So, uh, thank you for allowing me to digress a little bit. That, but that's another whole project, uh, that needs to be studied and presented.
Definitely outside of the scope of a DDA parking project. Yeah. But thank you, Ron. Um, yeah, I think it sounds like, you know, the, the DDA has, has taken what the Board of Trustees asked for from JVA last fall in terms of a rough study and is starting to now, uh, refine those ideas. And I think it'd be great to have you guys come back as another informational item at some point here in a, in, in the future. To, you know, look at what this project could actually do in terms of, uh, increasing the total increase of parking spaces as well as stormwater management on this property. So I think, uh, I think, uh, thank you guys for presenting it to us this evening. Um, I hope we weren't too harsh on you. I think we were just, uh, dealing with a little bit of confusion as to the direction we were supposed to go. And, um, I take responsibility for that, for not, uh, sharing, you know, talking about it fast early enough about, uh, what we were trying to get done here tonight and laying out some of the background of where this product came from. But I think, uh, we've got a little direction forward. So thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And you never have to apologize to me. This is, uh, you know, working together and, and figuring things out is, is how we do it, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
That is our, that's the end of our informational items for this evening. And we now move into the action items portion of the agenda, which is also DDA related. Uh, I believe this one however, is going to be introduced by Miranda.
Yes, it is. Um, okay. So before you tonight is the DDA vacancy appointment. So Mark Stringfellow had formerly served on the DDA, but his term expired at the end of June. I gave a little bit of history. The vacancy was actually posted twice, um, just because of some deadlines. So before you, you have two applicants, um, Karina Luscher, who, um, her application is in the packet and then, um, Ron Beatham who's also, his application is also in the packet. Um, Karina is owner of Salto and Tin Shed, um, the Clock Tower Corporation over there. And Ron is a property owner here in town. So they are both on the call. Karina is one of these callers in and I see Ron's on. The board, or excuse me, the DDA reviewed both applications at their last meeting. And they voted four votes for Ron and three votes for Karina. So their recommendation before the Board of Trustees is to appoint Ron. Ultimately, it is the board's decision. And so they're both here tonight to answer questions if you have them about their interest in, in joining the DDA.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. Um, I do want to have both, uh, Karina and Ron introduce themselves to board. I, I would just like a little procedural clarification here first because I'm a little confused by a little bit in the aim. Um, so the, the DDA opened applications, set a deadline, somebody applied by that deadline, and then they reopened again after the deadline. Is that correct?
Correct. So the deadline for the first one was the day of their meeting, so June 10th. So the board felt like they didn't have enough time to review the application that Karina had submitted and decided to then reopen it and, and allow till the middle or the first week in July to apply. And that's when Ron submitted it. So Karina submitted hers the first round, Ron the second round.
Okay. All right. Uh, well, I, let's, uh, before we start fielding questions from the Board of Trustees, I'd like to hear from our two applicants. And, uh, Karina, I guess you're one of our call-in users?
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, please just tell us a little bit about, you know, and I think a lot of us know you, but, uh, your interest in serving on the DDA, et cetera.
Yeah. Well, um, like I, like I had, um, communicated when I first applied. Um, you know, my, my husband and I, we own Salto and Tin Shed. Uh, we've been in business for eight years. I've served on, um, I actually originally got involved with the local government when, um, Sumaya was mayor and she had the vision, envisioned 2020 task, um, force. So I joined, joined up with that. And then I got involved with the DDA. And I can't, you know, memory doesn't really serve me. I think I served for two years. And then the just personal stresses of some pretty big family stuffs came up along with raising kids and, and running, running two businesses kind of gotten away. But, you know, I, I really, I enjoyed serving on the board. I, I think listening in on, on what the current board is doing is really, it's really interesting to me. I think it's an interesting time to get back involved. And, you know, I, I bring a lot of historical experience, having been in ned for as long as, as I have and, and also having, having run a business in town for as long as I have. So that's kind of my, my nutshell.
Well, thank you, Karina. Ron, is it Beatham? Are you on, Ron?
I think I had him muted. So let me scroll. Oh, I don't see him anymore. It does not appear he's on.
Oh, okay.
He was.
I thought I saw his name there too, a little bit, very recently. So, okay.
I'll keep an eye out and see if he jumps back on.
Okay. Yeah. Let us know if he does. So we'll hear from him as well. So I'm going to open this up to the Board of Trustees if anyone has questions for, um, for the DDA, for Miranda, or I guess just for Karina since Ron isn't here.
This is trustee Kumsesmile. My, my question was for the, for the DDA actually. And I was just wondering if there was a, an explanation of their recommendation.
So it was, so Hope is here. It was a vote. Um, it was a silent vote where they had emailed us their, their, who they were choosing. There was no further discussion. So I'm not, we can't provide that information. It's kind of just a flat vote.
Yeah, it's a, it is quite difficult, uh, in that sense for us to, to make a decision based on that recommendation. We don't know why that recommendation was made.
So I did include, I did include the meeting minutes, which provides some information about kind of what Ron and, and, um, Karina both shared. But yeah, it was. How the DDA votes, trustee Kumsesmile.
Can I, I'm sorry, this is Karina. So when I, when I was interviewed, um, for this position, there was no Ron. The, this other person wasn't on the call. I was the only applicant.
Cause he came out of the second, the second round of applications. Karina, he was a part of that second round. We remember they decided to reopen it again.
Okay. So you guys, so the, so the DDA had a second conversation with just him then.
That was the, yeah. So that was the June meeting that I, I believe that you weren't able to attend, if I recall correctly. Excuse me, their July meeting. Um, because you were at the June meeting and then he, he was, that's why I included the meeting minutes from both. Yeah. But he spoke to them at the July. But yeah, trustee Kumsesmile, neither myself or Hope could speak to why Ron is their, their choice. And then as you can see, the votes were close. Um, and they were absent one member. I'm not sure.
Just out of curiosity, Miranda, um, I don't know of any of our boards that do secret votes. Is that something that was within the DDA charter that they can do secret votes? I mean, all our votes are on the record. Uh, planning commission votes are on the record, BZA votes are on the record. You know, what's the difference with the DDA and having a secret?
So I'm going to look to Hope. I mean, since I've been here and I know even when they did the, the previous, when you guys did your previous appointments in December, that was a secret vote. Um, maybe Hope you can speak to that a little better than I can. If she's there. Hope, are you there?
Hi there. Thank you. Oops. Am I here? Okay, I'm here. Hey there. So great. You know, usually I guess the pieces of paper would be handed up to the chair and the chair would tally the vote and then I or the town clerk would take a look at that to make sure that it was okay. I wasn't sure. So Miranda and I contacted each other before the meeting and we thought, how do we do this vote? Is it something that each board member says who they vote for or who they don't? And Miranda and I agreed that the board, uh, the board members would email the both of us. And so that we would both compare what that vote was and that Miranda would read the final tally.
So Hope though, I think Mayor Larson's question is, you know, historically the DDA has always done secret votes, you know, or written down votes when it comes to appointments to vacancies. And what the reason is for why that's kind of always been, that's Lisa, since I've been here, that's been the procedure.
Yes. You know, I don't know why the always been has been that way, but I can definitely find out. But it, it has been that way with the other board members. We just elected a few in February. And then recently Ron. So I'm not sure, but it, that's how it has historically happened.
You know, it's just one of those things that kind of caught me as, uh, as being a little unusual and different than any other board in town. So I was curious if it's within the charter of the DDA to do secret votes or not. And maybe it's something we'll need to look at in terms of policy. But before we go any, too, any further and get any further discussion, I did see that, uh, Ron Beatham has rejoined us this evening. So, uh, welcome, Ron. We were just discussing and, uh, we just wanted to give, we had given, uh, Karina an opportunity to sort of introduce herself. Uh, discuss why she wanted to join the DDA, um, just basically introduce herself to the board. So I would really like to give you the opportunity to do so as well.
Yeah. Um, okay. Well, um, yeah, my name's Ron Beatham. You know, I've actually, uh, you know, been in the area for a good 35 years. Uh, you know, more up Pactolus Lake and then kind of moved down to Boulder and, um, have a little farm in Boulder. But I also, you know, um, own some property there in ned. And, you know, the idea is I'm no longer a spring chicken. So I'm thinking in like two or three years, I'm going to try and just make that my home. But right now I do have the farm. So it's just really looking for a way to get involved in community events. You know, I'm a physician and a farmer by trade. I don't know much about, you know, developing towns per se, but all I know is I'm bright eyed and bushed and willing to put in the energy that it takes.
Well.
That's it.
On, on behalf of all of us, thank you for stepping up to volunteer because, uh, it definitely takes a lot to volunteer for, uh, the boards in this town. And yeah, so thank you for stepping up, uh, and looking at an interest in the DDA. I'd like to bring this back to where we were a few moments ago with the Board of Trustees. If, uh, if anyone else has questions for, for Karina or Ron or the DDA or Miranda or town staff. I'm just going to go through here and, uh, tag people here. See, Tanya, do you have any questions? Tanya, I see your hand is up. So.
Oh, that hand was up a long time ago.
Oh, okay. Do you have any questions regarding this or comments? Do you have any questions regarding this or comments?
No, are we just voting for both or one? Is it?
Oh, it is up to the Board of, the DDA makes a recommendation to the Board of Trustees and then Board of Trustees is responsible for appointing someone. So, the Board of Trustees can essentially do either at this point.
There's two vacancies, right?
No, there's only one vacancy.
One vacancy and two applicants.
Okay.
So.
So, what are we asked of here to choose one?
Yes, we will, though we a motion after the discussion to appoint either Ron or Karina to the empty space on the DDA.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Alan, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess, I think the, I appreciate having the application of two good people. And, you know, sometimes these things get procedurally a little strange because Karina had her application in first. For some reason, they reopened it and then Ron applied, which seems a little awkward to me. And I, not to take anything away from anybody, but I like the idea of having a business owner being on the board. So, I guess I would just put a plug in for Karina.
All right, thank you, Alan. Eric, I know you'd already asked a question. I'm just going down the list here if you had any other comments or thoughts or questions.
Yeah, I just, I have similar feelings to Alan in that regard. It is the procedural process by which these two applicants have come to us that I find to be a bit concerning. And especially as that's secret, then we don't really understand why these recommendations are being made. Makes it very, very difficult for us to know how we should proceed.
Julian?
Having heard both Ron and Karina speak, I can't help but come to a conclusion regarding which one I would choose. But, that's almost irrelevant since there's already been a recommendation from the DDA. And it could be that that recommendation is based on really good reasoning. I don't know. So, I'm having a little trouble deciding why I would reject the recommendation of the DDA. And it's partly because I'm not sure why the recommendation was made in the first place. But, again, two competent people, I, yeah, my tendency would be to just accept the DDA's recommendation based upon what we've been given.
And maybe I should clarify the recommendation. So, it is a recommendation in the sense of that Ron received the most votes. And I think maybe probably that wording is mainly what's causing some confusion. Again, there was no further discussion to Trusty Coombs Ismail's point. It's that Ron received four votes and Karina received three.
Right. Lindsay?
Okay, sorry, took me a minute to find the unmute button. Yeah, I want to thank the two applicants for submitting to be a part of our town and to work on the DDA. That's really a wonderful thing to do and shows your commitment to our community. However, the, what happened with the DDA, when they set an application deadline and somebody meets that deadline and then they decide to move the deadline and reopen everything again, rather than just say, if they wanted more time to discuss the person who met the first deadline, why did they just postpone the discussion until the next meeting? Why did they open the application back up? And so, that doesn't sit well with me, seeing that process that they set some kind of deadlines and then didn't follow through with them. So, it just, it comes across as a little awkward, just the process of it. And then the hidden vote as well, and we don't know why they picked one over the other. I just, it doesn't sit well with me in that process.
I can just jump in here. Andrew, DDA saying that I think that there was a, with Mark resigning and whether the meetings, the meeting minutes never got posted or people were unaware, it was confusing for me, being on the DDA as well. So.
Although, Andrew, I want to jump out there and say that this was noticed correctly. Everything there was noticed as, I think the delay in noticing Trusty Danforth was because there was some confusion about when Mark's term ended. And so, there was a lot of back and forth between town and the DDA to confirm the accuracy of that date. When it was determined that he, his term ended, we posted within 24 hours. But, that led to that deadline being June 10th, which was the date of their meeting. But, everything was noticed correctly.
I believe you.
Yeah. So, I mean, it just, to me, just because the date, the application deadline fell on the day of their meeting, to me, just sounds like they would have accepted the applications and then talked about them the next meeting, rather than reopening it after people had already submitted. That's where, that to me just seems awkward. And, you know, it signaled, the signal that it sends is that the application they got, that they didn't like it for whatever reason, and then wanted to open it again to try to get more applications in. And so, it just, and then without having their reasoning behind it, without saying, this is the reason why we're voting this way is because of this person's qualifications, X, Y, and Z. It just seems awkward and hidden and I'm not sure. And it may not be that's what happened, but that's how it comes across. So, that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of my concerns, my questions, I think we do, regardless of this evening, want to look at some of the voting, how the DDA votes and this idea of secret ballot voting. But, you know, I'm a little concerned. We've had as the BOT, which is responsible for the appointment of any seats to all our advisory boards, been concerns in the past about preferential treatment and changing the rules midstream. And that's exactly what's happening here, which makes me very nervous that we are, you're setting ourselves up again here where everything was properly noticed, following procedure and policy, and then changed again after the deadline. So, I'm very concerned about that. So, on that point, you know, on that side, I kind of just come down on, we had one applicant by the deadline, which was Karina Lucia. And I'm not real clear why that came up again. And I think that it would be nice if we had more discussion from the DDA on that. But, so, you know, personally, that's just my personal concerns with this. But, this is an action item. Before we go any further, I would like to hear from any members of the public who would speak on this matter, because I do, we're called in or online. So, any member of the public who would like to speak for three minutes on the appointment of somebody to the DDA board, now would be your opportunity. Please raise your hand or speak up. I see one hand raised already, which is Ron, but I don't know, is that Ron? Did you want to speak on this or was that a hand from before? Ron Mitchell, sorry, we have two Rons now.
No, that was not a hand up, that was from before.
Okay, very good. Somebody else?
Hand over here.
Is that Jess?
Yes, it is.
All right, please, Jess, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, this is Jessie. I'm sorry, I'm an in-town resident. Yeah, I was actually attending the last couple of DDA meetings and I, I think I missed Ron's application the last meeting, but I was there for Karina's application. And it sounded like it was all kind of above board. She applied within the deadline. She had a great application. From what I know of Karina, I've worked with her on First Fridays, going back to eight years ago, seven years ago. So, she's solid business reputation in town. And, yeah, she's had her application in on time, so I would definitely go with Karina there. But, yeah, little procedural issues there. We've definitely accepted applicants, being the only applicant with the ProSAB board, and we just, you know, we take them if they're the only applicant and they show an interest. So, that's kind of how we do it. So, interested to know why other boards wouldn't do it that way. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Jess. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Not hearing or seeing anyone speaking up. We'll bring this back to the board for, if the board has final thoughts or comments or if anyone on the Board of Trustees would like to make a motion.
Hi, this is Alan. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Karina. And I think I real appreciate the application of Ron Beatham as well. Hope he'll stay involved in the community in any way that he can. Perhaps he can get on the DDA in the near future, but I just think procedurally, it doesn't make sense to me the way it went down. And I'd like to move that Karina be appointed.
We have a motion. Second from Trusty Taylor. Any comments or? Miranda, please call the vote.
Trusty Coombs Ismail?
No.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Trusty Apt?
Yes.
Trusty Danforth?
Yes.
Trusty Corvallin?
Wait, are we voting to approve Karina?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes. I believe that passed 5-1 to appoint Karina. I would love to echo what Trusty Apt said. Ron Beatham, thank you so much for applying. You got caught in a little bit of a weirdness here with the DDA scheduling, but I do know we are always looking for more volunteers. And I do know there is an opening currently on ProSAB that we have open applications for. Otherwise, I know that as, you know, the next time a DDA opening comes up, I'm sure we will be getting in touch with you and asking if you are still interested in volunteering, because we truly appreciate you stepping up to volunteer.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the consideration. So, either way, cheers.
Cheers, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I believe, oh wait, no, I believe we have one more action item.
Mayor Larson, just before we continue, I just wanted to note that I think we did forget to open to public comment during discussion items. Is that not the case?
We do public comment during discussion and.
Sorry, information. Okay, not information.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Thank you for, yeah, keeping me on top of me, because, you know, this virtual thing, sometimes things slip through the cracks. We have an administrative action item, updating Netherlands check signers, which we need to have officially in the record, I believe, Miranda.
The bank needs the official minutes for this.
Right. So, you.
The general. Jen, are you, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yes, we just need to update the check signers with the bank. So, we are recommending the approval of Chris Larson, Jonathan Baumhomer, Alan Apt, Karen Garrity, and Miranda Fisher to be the signers on the account and anyone else that's currently on the bank account for them to be removed.
Any questions or comments from the Board of Trustees? Any comment from the public on this action item? Bringing it back to the board, do we have a motion to approve?
Trusty Coombs Ismail, a motion to approve Chris Larson, Jonathan Baumhomer, Alan Apt, Karen Garrity, Miranda Fisher as check signers on all town of Netherlands bank accounts.
Trusty Taylor, second.
We have a very complete motion and a second. Miranda, please call the vote.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Trusty Danforth?
Yes.
Trusty Apt?
Yes.
Trusty Coombs Ismail?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trusty Corvallin?
Yes.
All right, very good. We are now going to move into the next portion of our agenda, which is discussion items. I would like to, I'd like to offer a, let's take a five-minute break. I know we normally do this in person, but I've been drinking a lot of water and could use a five-minute break before we dive into the heavy discussion items for this evening. So, let's take, let's come back here and like, you know, well, let's make it seven minutes. 9:15 PM reconvene the meeting after we take a break to refill water and take care of things. All right, fair warning, one minute left. All right, everybody, it is nine fifteen. So we will call back to order here, the meeting of the Board of Trustees, and move into our discussion items this evening. We are gonna start talking about a resolution to pursue a zero waste action plan. This is actually a discussion item?
Correct. Discussion item, because it's the first time it's coming before you.
That's why I saw it. That slipped into the wrong thing, but yeah, this is just a discussion item this evening. And I believe we have our sustainability advisor Garrett online to introduce it to us this evening. Welcome, Garrett.
Yeah, good evening. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Mayor Larson, I included a PowerPoint presentation. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to skim through that to give you a sense of our intentions with this grant application.
Sounds good. Just tell me when do you move from slide to slide?
Great. So yeah, you could scroll down a little bit. Um, so the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has issued a request for applications for their, what they're calling advancing front range community up the zero waste ladder. Um, we'll talk about what zero waste is in a minute. That grant application is due August tenth. Um, so it's, it's due in a few weeks. Awards are between twenty-five K and fifty K. There is no match required. Grant money is reimbursed to the town. And once the grant is, um, this grant is available for two years. So it's possible we could apply, um, for twenty twenty-one money and then come back again for additional funds. We'll talk more about that later. Scroll down, please. Uh, so the SAB is recommending the town of Netherlands pursue grant funding to pay for a consultant to develop a zero waste action plan. Um, as far as the minute details of that action plan, that'll be discussed in some slides later. Um, so zero waste encompasses, you know, lots of things, manufacturer, manufacturing, purchasing, reuse, recycle, and composting of all the material we use, which is safe as a la, uh, which is safe for disposal as a last resort. Um, as we know, landfills are an environmental problem. It pollutes air, water, soil. Um, zero waste is more than just reducing garbage sent to landfills. It's about products with less packaging, fewer harmful components, local grown or manufactured products, and material made with the highest possible recycled content. So this is really a comprehensive plan for Netherlands to reduce waste. Um, some, uh, zero waste strategies might include, um, making it easier for businesses and residences to recycle, um, increasing the capture and sale of reusable and repairable goods, um, promoting existing composting options. Um, you know, those sort of things, uh, you know, education outreach, um, illegal dumping, that sort of thing. So next slide, please. So here are some of Netherlands' zero waste efforts. Uh, two thousand twelve, they adopted the Boulder County Zero Waste Action Plan. Um, we've got the, in two thousand nineteen, we've got a special events requirements for zero waste. And also in that same year, uh, the SAB updated their, their goals to include zero waste. And then in two thousand twenty, a few months ago, we passed a waste hauler resolution, which requires waste haulers that serve the town of Netherlands to report their waste hauling data to the county. So we're now tracking that data. Next slide. Um, so this plan, so, um, you know, we would go out to an RFP for this consultant. Uh, in this plan, um, we are thinking that, uh, you know, we would need a comprehensive analysis of waste diversion data. So using that data, we're collecting from waste haulers this year. You know, how can we improve upon those numbers for, um, moving forward? Um, we want to understand where our waste is coming from and how we might, uh, be able to implement a sustainable solutions. So it's really understanding our waste streams. Um, so for example, conducting outreach to grocery stores, restaurants, schools, cafeterias. Um, you know, looking at reducing disposable foodware and packaging. Uh, is there a, you know, a nonprofit that can be set up to coordinate recycling and environmental education in the community? Um, so we're really looking at the zero waste action plan as, um, a community driven plan to, um, you know, to, to bring about sustainable zero waste solutions. Um, and of course, we want to compare ourselves to other communities. How are other mountain communities doing this? You know, if you look at the Boulder County, uh, Zero Waste Plan, it's really not helpful for Netherlands, because Netherlands has unique challenges. We can't just say, okay, Western or one way, come and provide curbside compost and recycling services. That's not possible. It costs those waste haulers way too much money to service Netherlands. So we have to think, we have to think differently, um, which is why we need a zero waste action plan that is tailored to Netherlands' needs and desires. Um, so this zero waste action plan would provide recommendations on strategies to implement, making it easier for, um, you know, us getting a hold of the low hanging fruit. You know, Netherlands is short staffed, um, you know, not a lot of volunteers. So this action plan needs to be tailored towards, you know, what are, what's the most bang for our buck? And lastly, and most importantly, is the development of this plan needs to be community focused, developed by the community, and adopted by the community. Um, it's really about, you know, a grassroots effort and not necessarily a policy, um, driven decision to increase waste diversion. Uh, so next slide. Um, so this is a, you know, a potential path towards zero waste. You know, this year, we're measuring and capturing waste diversion data, as I talked about. Uh, next year, if we get this grant and you approve, you know, if the board approves us going for this grant, is, you know, we use a consultant to analyze our waste data, to create the zero waste action plan. And then we still have time potentially to apply for additional funding through this grant opportunity for additional zero waste, uh, implementations. So, you know, if we, this is the first round of funding, um, starts, you know, August tenth, and then there will be subsequent funding rounds after that. So, um, this is just, this is just one, one phase of the grant. Um, so yeah, that is my, that's my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Garrett. Um, just out of curiosity, do you have an idea of what size grant you're, we're looking to apply for?
Yeah, so, um, one thing that I was, I spoke to EcoCycle today about the grant application and how to make this a competitive application. And one thing that they stressed is that, is staff support. So Netherlands, you know, being able to, you know, make sure that, you know, logistically, um, this plan gets completed. Um, we get the appropriate stakeholders at the meetings, we get the business community, um, you know, the various commissions, that sort of thing. So they talked about, you know, potentially adding budget for staff, uh, to be involved. That could be me, that could be somebody else. So I haven't had a chance to talk with the SAB about, uh, an additional line item for, for town staff to support the zero waste action plan. So if we decided to do that, that would obviously increase the budget.
But if I'm right, there's, there's still, no matter what, there's a zero percent match from the town.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, any other, any questions from Board of Trustees members?
Oh, I just wanna, I'm all for, uh, zero waste, of course. Um, I would like to see in this grant, the ability to give restaurants compostable to-go containers really is something, I know they always say they can't afford some of the businesses that don't use compost, some of them do use it, but the ones that don't say they can't afford it. So I think we should be giving it to them then as part of this grant. I also think we should have compost bins for free available for restaurants to use in town, because they create so much compostable waste. And I also think that, um, we should have, I, I know EcoCycle has made some really good online presentations about how to create your own home compost that's bear proof, but we should also, um, use that education so that, uh, people who don't live in town can be composting at home without the extra cost of driving it and the hassle of EcoCycle. Um, so those are my comments. One, compost bins in town for people to use from town and in town restaurants, compostable containers for to-go and education about composting.
All great items to go into this master plan, indeed.
I agree with Tony. I think, I think, uh, one thing we've talked about for a long time at SAB is, uh, trying to help restaurants compost. And I think that's probably a big item in terms of trying to get things diverted from the landfill. And, uh, you know, I think the, uh, containers and then helping them do that. So I think that's important. And I, I do think that that line item for staff is a good idea, because everybody's stretched and, uh, this has a lot of potential. And I didn't realize until, you know, a long time ago, I, I found out that, you know, there's so much of an impact on climate from not diverting things from the landfill. So I think this has good implications for us trying to lessen our impact on, uh, the climate and helping with the climate crisis.
This is trustee Taylor. Uh, forgive me, Garrett, I have a question for, uh, Mayor Larson and trustee apt. I, I understand that, I understand, Garrett, that you're a consultant, and I don't want to discuss, uh, your ability as a consultant in any way here. But you did mention, Garrett, that part of this may involve hiring a consultant to help us produce a plan. And I was just curious, Mayor Larson, trustee apt, what has been the track record of the town with regards to hiring consultants to come in and propose plans? Has that been a pretty good track record?
Uh, yes, but I'm, I'm not real clear on your question. You track record for consultants to come in and propose?
So if we were, so are you comfortable with the notion, from your experience with Netherlands and its relationships with consultants generally, with taking an approach where we, we bring in an outside consultant to help? Or would we consider a better option to work with? That we with, yeah, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm, I myself have had difficulties with consultants providing proposals, and I'm just wondering if the town has had good luck with consultants helping us plan.
Oh, so you're, you're asking about in terms of the, the proposed, um, zero waste plan that would be the outcome of this grant, not the grant proposal? Okay.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. I mean, we certainly pay consultants to produce master plans, like our master infrastructure plan, CIP. Those have been, um, in my mind, successful. Uh, shown us the need, the, the needs in the town and helped us with our long-term planning. So I, I haven't seen any concerns. I think you do, uh, raise, your question raised a question in my mind in terms of, um, and it's for Garrett in this case, uh, if we were to get this grant, would you be applying to be that consultant?
Um, I've thought about that. Um, but I think using a, a consultant that has done this in the past would be more worthwhile for Netherlands. Um, there are consultants like EcoCycle that have built these plans for, they just finished with Steamboat. Um, so I would, I would advocate that, you know, a consultant.
It takes me a minute, Garrett, to figure out who it is.
No worries. So no, there, there are consultants that, that specialize in, in zero waste, in the zero waste sector.
Have we answered your question to Julian, trustee Taylor?
Yeah. Okay. I was, I was just, I was just curious, uh, your experience with that. So that's fine.
I would just chime in that I've had pretty good experiences both in four columns when I was on the council there. And I've observed that here in Netherlands, we've had quite good success. And, uh, you know, Garrett's not technically a consultant, you could say that he is in a sense. And he's done a fantastic job.
Uh, any other trustees have comments or thoughts on this proposal?
Yeah, this is trustee Kooms Ismail. I do really, uh, think that this is a course of action that the town, uh, needs to be taking. And so I absolutely. Oh, man. There it is. Um, I applaud, uh, the, the kind of steps, uh, to identify this grant and to, you know, pursue zero waste for the town. I do lament, uh, that, uh, the grant would be to hire someone to give us an action plan, um, rather than to take action, uh, in, in any kind of meaningful way. I do feel like there are probably some things we could come up with, without a consultant, uh, that could be done, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, you talk about that low hanging fruit, and I just wonder if you've considered, uh, including, you know, actual steps towards a zero waste Netherlands, be, uh, beyond, you know, just hiring this consultant to create an action plan, uh, for the town.
Yes, that's something that we've talked about, uh, with the SAB. You know, how do we improve recycling and composting? Um, how do we get businesses to compost? Um, and the truth is, it's, it's, it's a complicated question, because it's expensive. You know, businesses don't want to do it, because it, those compostable materials are expensive and, and they can't take it to the, the Boulder County transfer station. So there's, there are limiting factors in, in the current, um, you know, in the current practices in Netherlands. But I think there are barriers that can be broken if we facilitate a conversation with all of these stakeholders. So I think the process is, is arguably more important than the action plan. It's, it's getting the community together to, to identify these solutions. Um, and then the action plan is really just, you know, with limited staff, limited volunteers, how do we execute on these recommendations?
Right, so I guess then that what follows from that is the concern that we would get an action plan. We have no way of implementing, and we would essentially just sink some grant money into a consultant because an action plan that we have no ability to actually implement.
And yeah, and that's, and that's exactly, and that's why, that's why it's important to have staff, um, involved in the creation of this, so that it's taking in consideration staff time and volunteer time. It's not just, uh, hey, this is city of Boulders, zero waste plan, we're gonna give it to Netherlands. Like, no, this is, this is tailored to Netherlands and their resource constraints.
And we don't feel like then that we have the expertise in the people already working on this, uh, you know, whether on staff, yourself and town staff, to create, uh, such a plan without hiring a consultant. That's basically what we're saying.
No, I think, I think we have to take, take a step back. That, that is exactly what we, what we need to do. Yeah. That's my recommendation, and that's SAB's recommendation, is take a step back, have somebody that has experience working with mountain communities to come in here and work with, you know, community stakeholders, stakeholders to develop this plan. that has experience working with mountain communities to come in here and work with, you know, community stakeholders, stakeholders to develop this plan.
Anyone?
Thanks for that, thanks for clarifying.
Any other Board of Trustees?
Well, right now, we're just talking about applying for a grant, right? So the whole idea of hiring a consultant can come up later, right?
Right, we are looking tonight to give direction. This is just a discussion item tonight, so this would then come back as an action item to direct Garrett and the SAB to apply for this grant. We're just trying to give them feedback if we are interested in them continuing to use their time and resources to pursue this grant opportunity.
And Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, but the grant is due August 11th, so we would like to know if you want Sab and Garrett to continue because they would have to bring this back before the next meeting for your approval. Right, Garrett?
Right.
Okay.
This is Trustee Kooms Esmael again, sorry, just speaking on my own behalf here. I I very, I'm very much think that we should be applying for this grant, and I would love to see that the grant include steps that are more actionable beyond the hiring of a consultant, and that that's basically what I would like to see in the in the grant application. That the consultant can be part of it, but I would love to see some clearly actionable steps that can be done regardless of a consultant.
Yes.
Since time is of the essence, would it be helpful to convert this to an action item?
I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's definitely an option.
I move that we make this an action item.
We have a motion to turn this into an action item. Do we have a second?
A second, this is Ellen.
Ellen got in there with the second and the name. Miranda, please call the vote on moving this from a discussion to an action item.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Kooms Esmael?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth? Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Very good, this is now an action item.
Great.
Before we go any further with our comments and discussion from the board, I do, you know, was going to do this even as a discussion item, but want to give the public an opportunity. Anyone in the public who would like to speak on the zero-waste grant, this is your opportunity to speak for three minutes.
Hi, this is Melody. I'm the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board, 24 Wildwood Drive in Netherlands. I just want to say a huge thanks to the board for helping the Sustainability Board and our hire of Garrett. And a huge thanks to Garrett. I think he's done a great job at looking over all of our plans. We have throughout the years, you know, come up definitely with actionable steps that need to be taken, and I think Garrett mentioned some of them, which is converting the restaurants over to compost is a huge thing. And, you know, figuring out how to do that, I think, is where the consultant comes in, is what's the best strategy to help our restaurants and facilitate that without it being a burden. And then also, I think, another step of this is really our our citizens have what ha- is what has guided zero waste so far in this community. Our citizens are really actionable and really care about the environment, compost themselves, recycle themselves, and have really pushed for for these improvements. And I think we really need the town to start having an actionable plan of how to guide that process so we can continue with this community improvement. And I think we can go really far because we do have the community on our side as far as increasing compost, increasing recycling, and getting rid of of regular landfill trash as much as possible. So I just want to say, I think it's great, especially since, you know, this is basically a grant free to the town where where we can get some action items on the ideas and creative solutions that our mountain community has come up with over the past 10 years and figure out how to implement those.
Thank you, Melody. Any other members of the public? Not, we will bring it to the board for discussion for a motion on Resolution 2020-26.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Oh, go, go for it, Taylor.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. So I, I, all right, I'm, I'm just, I had this discussion with my spouse three or four weeks ago. And Garrett, I'd just like to ask you this, if we know of any town that has attempted to move beyond composting to to working with some company that produces standard-sized washable carryout trays such that a a family could bring their own washable carryout trays with them in case they were going, they had leftovers or anything. I mean, composting is good, but better would be just washing a plate. I'm just wondering, are there any companies out there that are kind of working with towns on popularizing something like that?
I know of, in in Boulder, there was a company, I don't know if they're still doing it, but it was basically like a dishwashing service where I think the, they basically, there would be a a few different businesses participating in this program. And, you know, if the residents took it home, they would go around and collect them and bring them back, wash them, sanitize them, and that sort of thing. It was mostly for businesses that didn't have like dishwashers and that sort of thing. But yeah, it's not very common.
But it's like they did at least that. Wonderful, thank you very much, Garrett.
Yeah, I know that Boulder has that company Vessel, right, which runs coffee shops.
Right.
That's what I was going to say, Vessel.
Yeah, my question was, you mentioned before that there was opportunity to apply for additional funds within the scope of the timeframe of this grant, is how exactly would that work? So now my concern, you know, of just hiring a consultant and not having actionable items in the grant is that we, we don't take full advantage of the scope of this grant and how much money that it can actually give us if we only ask for money to hire a consultant and that's all we get. How do we get more money?
So, so yeah, I mean, there there are, there is opportunity to apply for more funds, you know, through this grant opportunity. The next funding cycles are going to focus on organic waste infrastructure. So if we're talking about residential, commercial composting, that's sort of the grant opportunity there, as well as construction and demolition. I know Netherlands already has their program, but, you know, we can improve on that as well. So, you know, I don't know if I answered your question, but yeah, there, you know, the consultant, I I would want to see a zero-waste action plan that would be supported by volunteers. You know, actionable steps for those volunteers so that when grants do pop up, it's very easy to know what we should be working on to make the the biggest impact.
And then just one very last thing, I promise, and that, and that question is whether or not policy would be part of this action plan, that we would be basically hiring someone that could also recommend policies that this board and the town could actually implement, resolutions and ordinances that would lead us to being zero-waste.
Of, of course, I think policy is is pretty fundamental, but you you can't forget the community engagement aspect, and that's what I want this zero-waste action plan to be, is that you can't go and try to pass policy and the board not support it, the community doesn't support it, you know, that that's so yes, policy would be included in that, yep.
Hey, thank you for drawing this out.
Good questions and answers. Anyone else? Or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve proceeding with this plan.
My second.
Like, Trustee Taylor and Trustee Kooms Esmael?
Good. We're, we're all recognizing each other's voices now.
Okay, Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan?
Yes.
Trustee Kooms Esmael?
Yes.
Motion passes. Look forward to seeing the grant and best of luck. Thank you, Garrett, for presenting it, for doing all the work. Also, to Melody and all of SAB for putting in the hard work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next discussion items, which is with regards to the water sewer rates and possible modifications to the Netherlands municipal I, the notes I have is that Tanya is going to be introducing this one.
Okay, well, you have hopefully read the document, which pretty much sums up my feelings about the code. I feel that only the A and B actually address the issue of water use and taxing the water system and all the other CDE and F, is there an F? I don't have it in front of me. I can't read it on the screen, it's too small. Well, I can kind of see it. There isn't, there's not an F. Okay, anyway, oh, thank you. Yes. Oh, there is an F. Okay, I feel like only A and B actually address the issue of water usage and taxing the system. And I think to simplify everything, for now, we should just eliminate DE and CDE and F. There could be a debate that C does use more water, but I think that could all be addressed after the rate study gets done and we actually determine who's using more water and how to create sustainability and water usage. I personally don't think a kitchen uses a lot of water compared to another bathroom, and some houses have five bathrooms, but I also don't think we need to go out just assuming a house with five bathrooms is going to use a lot of water because a lot of those are second or third homes that are sitting empty all the time. So I think just for sake of simplicity, we simplify the code, and after the rate study is done, we come up with a fairer system that encourages conservation of water, that makes water affordable for the basic needs of people that need to drink and bathe and wash dishes, and then create a system that will make water more expensive for those with luxuries of hot tubs, gardens, and cars. That's just it in a nutshell.
All right, well, thank you, Tanya. Eric, your name is also listed as the other trustee you asked for this discussion. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm open basically to to anything that can amend this code, any language that can amend it to be more equitable because I do feel like it clearly is not at the moment. And that there are significant issues with these definitions that that are unclear and hard to enforce, and that it just promotes a general feeling of malaise among our residents who become affected by the vagaries in this ordinance, and that by cleaning it up, we we serve multiple purposes of being more equitable with water, but also in kind of, you know, strengthening our community so that we trust each other.
Thank you, you are more eloquent than me.
Well, it's also 9:47 PM, so we all give, we all get a pass with eloquence at this time of the night. I'll just go down, I know that Trustee Taylor, you've been doing a lot of work on this this week. Would you like to chime into the discussion next?
Yes, and I I have to say that I agree in principle with both Trustees Kooms Esmael and Trustee Corvillan. My problem, my concern would be in modifying a definition that is used over 20 times in the rest of the NMC. My experience with documents is that if you modify a definition, there's an awful lot of work involved in that. And so I would want to encourage us not to modify a definition without a serious analysis of where it's used and how that affects those other cases. But I I also agree that I I have made the claim that the definitions for use and dwelling unit are themselves fairly sloppy and should not be used for accounting purposes. And so I propose that use simply has nothing to do with the base fee. I propose that the way we describe the base fee is very confusing and very messy, and it's partly because we include this fantastically ambiguous term "use" in the definition of the base fee. And I'm proposing that we replace the word "use" in that definition of the base fee, as I've proposed in my document, with just an an unambiguous address. So an unambiguous address and a tap. Leaving "use" out of it altogether because "use" introduces far too many problems, one of which is that town staff cannot determine how many uses are inside a building without actually going in and inspecting every single building. We don't have the people to do that, even if we could convince ourselves that "use" were important to the base fee. And so my proposal is, we go with things that are demonstrable and easily and easily assessed. And so I have proposed new wording for the NMC, and if that looks like it's anywhere close to being okay, I would like to discuss that as well.
So a- as I understand, as I understand, having read the stuff in the packet, the the information from Tanya and Eric, as well as your proposal, Julian, the outcome of either changing the definitions here within whatever section definition of a dwelling unit, or your plan, Julian, of changing it from "use" to "address" and "meter", the end outcome is exactly the same in terms of the secondary "use".
I believe that would be true, and my only concern is with modifying a definition without seriously analyzing. That's why I would advocate just removing that definition from the equation altogether, until we can analy- analyze its use and then modify it.
Right, because yeah, that was the concern I had was dwelling units, and you know, dwelling does occur in a lot of places in the town code, and I haven't had a chance to go through and see all the places where this might also then be affected. So I really liked your proposal of the meter or address use, or changing "use" to "meter" or "address", because that is, as you say, unambiguous.
Yes, and if that were going to cost a lot of money, we'd have to rethink it. But if my math is correct, and Chris has looked at my math, and of course, Chris is going to look at a bunch more math if we decide to make this change, if my math is correct, we're talking a buck or so a month in loss that we'd have to make up either by raising the base rate slightly or by raising usage.
For just water, not for sewer.
Just water, right.
That is correct. I did my analysis only on water because water is the most uniform usage for Netherlands residents. But yes, you are correct. More math is needed.
Other trustees, Alan, Lindsay? Eric, or Eric, I think it's just Alan, Lindsay, open.
I concur that something needs to be fine-tuned here. And, you know, I look forward to the rate study because I think that until we get more data in terms of who's really using the most water and how did that correlate with use designations or not, and, you know, as Tanya has said, and we've said previously, something that encourages conservation and penalizes the opposite is where I think we ought to head. So I do think there's some wordsmithing that has to take place here.
I agree with with what everyone has said before me here, is that something needs to be tweaked. I do agree that the "use", the word "use" and how that's applied is confusing. And certainly designating whether or not a a house has a kitchen is giving it another "use" and an additional base fee, I think is kind of irrelevant. And so I think more information is going to come out when we have that rate study. And so hopefully that will give us some better recommendations on how to handle this kind of situation. And anything we can do to be a little bit more clear and transparent and and have easy-to-follow rules, I think, is going to help us and and win us some favor with the the constituency.
This is Trustee Taylor. I would just like to thank town staff for making sure that the rate consultants were informed about this discussion. They seemed to be pretty much up on it and seemed to be ready to deal with whatever we decided.
Um, but I just kind of want to be kind of clear that the reason I'm bringing this up now is because I don't think we should wait until the rate study to make this preliminary change with the code to alleviate um, the financial burden that a lot of people are feeling that I'm hearing about. With the extra water and sewer base fee, it adds up, it's not insignificant. Um, for, uh, a code that we can all agree is a little bit ambiguous.
Before we go any further, uh, it's nine fifty-four PM. Do I have a motion to extend the meeting till ten thirty?
Motion to extend meeting to ten thirty.
Reluctantly second.
Tanya and Julian with the motion and second.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Esmael?
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Well, in order to kind of like uh, make, stop, well, in order to be quick about this, what would be recommendations from the board to create an action item that we could put in the next couple of weeks, maybe not next meeting, but the next one, or maybe even the next meeting? How would you guys like it to be written? I, I like what, um, Julian Taylor has said.
So I, I, this is trustee Taylor and I, I do have one concern about making this change precipitously. And it is that there are some financial issues to consider. So for example, if my math is correct and Chris is going to have to verify it with more math and cover the sewer as well as water. If my math is correct, this isn't a huge burden for the town, but it is a burden. It is up to a thousand bucks a month that's going to have to be made up. And do we make that up by raising the base fee? Or by raising the usage rate? And therein lies the procedural problem that I'm going to place with Karen, I think. Uh, how would we approach changing water rates? We would have to announce that to the public. We would are, i- is it necessary to get public input on that? What, what would be our process?
Well, you know, ideally, if you were going to make changes, you would have it be a public process and potentially have community engagement like we're talking about with this, um, you know, with some of the studies that we're doing and planning that we're doing. The reality is you would have the powers, I understand it, to change, uh, the fees. And, and I'm just wondering if there's a way to do something, I don't know, where you adjust the fee schedule for now, just on a temporary basis, that you don't even necessarily have to change the code. But I have to, I would have to think about that and I'd want to talk to, you know, Chris about it and the utilities team and see if there is something we could do temporarily. But you make a good point, which is we're going to basically reduce the revenue, you know, for utilities by twelve thousand a year. So how are we going to make up for it in a budget that we're already, you know, not going to be meeting, um, our projected revenues and we're going to have to re- reduce our expenses. Um, the other, the question I have though is the planning commission is often involved in these conversations. Would you want the planning commission involved in this? I mean, this is kind of how you do engage the community or these are further, you know, elected appointed officials participating in the conversation. Um, it almost seems like you need sort of a subcommittee of sorts, maybe with two board members, maybe two planning commission, maybe two staff, you know, something along that line. Um, we definitely would have to engage legal, you know, to just make sure that, you know, who, who's empowered to do what and, and what does that look like? You know, an ordinance would, would have to be passed. And of course, that's where you have the public vetting piece because you'd have public hearings. Um, so this isn't something you can just put on an action item and get it done. Um, you, it, it's a process, um, that's going to involve hearings and whatnot, um, and some research. And I, I, I don't, I, I, I think it's a great conversation. Um, I just think having it this late at night, um, it, it's a great start, but there's still a long way to go on this road.
Can the, the key reason I bring that up, the key reason I bring that up, Karen, is because someone is going to have to make the decision where we put that offset. If we put it in the base code, in the, in the base fee, or if we put it in usage. And that decision is one that also counts. Uh, it, that also wherein we also need to take fairness into account. I'm not sure which of those approaches is more fair generally, and that would require some analysis.
Can we, can we, and this is a question for town staff. This is Mayor Larson. Um, what, how much, and then probably for Chris Pelletier primarily, what level of effort would be needed to refine and confirm the numbers that trustee Taylor has come up with? The, the thousand dollars a month for water, first to confirm those, but also to determine what the sewer impact would be? Is that something that, um, you know, how, is that something that we could, could occur within the next few, couple of weeks?
Yes. That's fairly simple math and I don't mind providing that, um, arithmetic. I did look at trustee Taylor and it's essentially right and there's, you know, five different ways you could slice it, but at the end of the day, um, his calculations are fair. Um, but obviously I have feedback that I'd want to give on this proposal. Um, at least an opportunity to provide information to the BOT prior to this going to action. I see a lot of different things in here that, um, need to be considered that might not be being considered tonight. So, um, so that's my.
What I would like to propose would be that we actually bring this back again as a discussion at our next meeting. Uh, ideally, uh, with town staff being able to provide the financial impact on the water and sewer funds, water wastewater funds, um, because that is going to be kind of one of the crux of the issues is what is the financial impact? And as trustee Taylor, Taylor said, what is the equitable, equitable way to adjust fee structures to do so? Uh, whether we do that by definition, changing the definition of dwelling unit or whether we do that by changing the definition of use is a question more that would be for legal and, um, you know, I'd, I would almost personally, I would like to have planning commission take a look at, at it if we're looking at changing dwelling. Because they are the ones who have the most day-to-day familiarity amongst our advisory boards with the town code. A catch place where dwelling, yeah, where changing the dwelling unit definition would, uh, have unintended consequences.
Well, this is why I would like to avoid changing definitions at all.
So can we, can we have this as a discussion item at our next board of trustees meeting? In which we have the financial impact on the water and wastewater treatment funds, also, uh, staff input with regards to, um, you know, just as, uh, Chris Pelletier was just saying, in terms of impact on our services in any changes, but also from, um, Karen reaching out to find out what sort of the, the legal aspects and legal, um, wow, I am starting to tire quickly. Legal implications of trying to do these changes either in a rapid turnaround or a, you know, or waiting for the rate study or what we can do in terms of mitigation in the short term versus the long-term solutions.
So yeah, it sounds like Chris Pelletier said that, um, his team can get together those numbers and then he can put together an aim with those numbers as well as, uh, his team's feedback on impact, uh, that a change like this could have on services. I can definitely look at the legal protocol and what it would look like if we were in fact going to try to change the code and what steps we would need to do that. I'd also like to spend a little bit of time just trying to think outside the box. If there's some way to achieve what you're hoping to do in a short term prior to the, um, rate study being completed where you'll have a more robust uh, uh, set of information in front of you to make a, a better informed decision. Let's just put it that way. I, I'm just wondering, you know, in my mind, if there's a way to do this that isn't so cumbersome, but I need to think about that some more.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to close decisions at ten PM.
Yeah, exactly. So, so the answer to your two-part question is yes and yes.
Okay.
I just want to add one thing before we move on. Um, from my side, I thank you, Karen. I like the idea of trying to think of a way to help alleviate for the people immediately paying. I, I want, you keep talking about the, some people keep mentioning the financial burden of the monthly loss of income, but remember it's only going to be for those people who don't have an extra meter and don't have another address. So that is only a percentage of those paying that second base fee. It's not everybody. And also realizing that they have been paying into the system. Um, basically giving town of Netherlands free money in a way because they aren't actually using any more water than I am or other people are. Um, so, you know, it's, it's kind of unfair. You know, that's what the right word is to be used, thinking about the loss of that revenue when that revenue in, in my interpretation of the code is not, um, fair. And that's just, I'm just going to leave it there. But I do like the idea of looking for a short-term um, solution that Karen was saying and she's going to brainstorm, um, for helping these people.
I do also want to throw this open because it's a discussion item. If anyone from the public would like to chime in, uh, for three minutes? Just, uh, okay. Colin user eleven, you got the first talk in here. I saw several go off of mute, so I just called Colin user eleven. We can hear you.
Hi. Uh, okay, great. Um, this is Kim Goho. I'm an, um, in, um, in-town Netherlands resident. Um, I have a couple of concerns. I really appreciate that the board is, um, reconsidering the wording and the implication, implementation of the code. Um, based on the third-party presentation this evening, um, I appreciate that they're doing a six-month rate study. Um, the problem that I have right now is that, um, everyone is paying the fee, the extra base fee while this is going on. We've been paying since January. So that's my main concern. I also have a concern with, um, a couple quotes and, and, and I, I may have not jotted them down, uh, exactly as it was presented, but this is how I'm interpreting the code. I believe that was Chris Pelletier. I have a concern with someone, uh, uh, making decisions in a vacuum and not vetting this process through the rest of the town administration, the town, um, lawyer. Um, I also found, um, this one to be concerning. I don't want to offer a solution before we understand the issue. So I appreciate where you're going. My main concern right now is that we are and have been paying since January. And I don't appreciate that we have been charged the fee without this whole entire process being fully vetted. So I, I want it to be credited to my account until there is a proposed solution and something that's been accepted and, um, approved by the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, Colin user fifteen, I think you, I'm just going to go down the list here and you guys are all muting. So Colin user fifteen.
I'm unmuting it for them. They both have, so I don't know if they want to give comments. It's just giving them the opportunity. Cause phones can't mute.
Anyone who would like to speak, speak up.
Can I just, um?
Well, just let, let's give a second here. Make sure the public. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this?
Uh, this is Laura King. I'd like to speak to this.
Laura, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I would like to, uh, echo my thank you to all the people who are working on this. I'm very, um, I, I like what Julian, uh, Taylor, trustee Taylor is saying about changing the, um, code to take the use out of it because that is, I think, a big part of what makes it so ambiguous and makes it so unfair is that you, it really doesn't boil down to the structure of your house or how much water you use or even what you're doing in your house. Um, people with the exact same situation, some people pay it, some people don't. And so, um, uh, you know, the longer it goes on, the more difficult it is. Um, you know, for people who are paying it and, uh, you know, I think that if you do, um, go and take it to the lawyer, I, it would make a lot of sense to bring up the, the fact that it isn't being enforced in a, in a consistent manner. Um, I'd also just like to echo what, uh, trustee Corvillan said about, um, the, you know, the loss of revenue, the analysis of a loss of revenue. Um, you know, that's a pretty gray area when it comes to the fact that, you know, you could also say, well, there's lots of other houses that have a potential extra use that we could be charging this. Um, or, you know, it needs to be done on some kind of concrete level that is measurable and, um, and clear. And right now, what you have is very same situation and the very same house, um, type. And some people are being charged and some people aren't. And that does cause, you know, some, um, just bad feelings through town, uh, when you have this, a situation that is just blatantly not enforced in a consistent way. So I think that that is a potential solution is taking the use out of it because the town is not able to to monitor that, uh, in any meaningful way. Um, and I do also think that a lot of this comes out of the equation when you just are charging for use. It's like the people who are using the most water are the ones paying the most into the system. It creates, um, incentive for conservation. And it's, it's just blatantly simple and fair. And so in the long term with the rate study, I think, you know, I hope we'll consider that. And in the short term, I hope we'll consider changing the double, uh, use or base fee because of the fact that it's, it's why some people are paying it and some people are not. There's no real justification because there's people with similar uses, people with similar houses. Um, and it's just sort of this, um, as Chris Pelletier, uh, you know, explained, it's sort of this, if we happen to catch you speeding approach to enforcement, which doesn't in my mind, you know, relate very well to, to water policy. So thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. I appreciate everyone thinking this through and working to improve it.
Thank you very much. Any other members of public?
I think Ron.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Ron Mitchell, Netherlands resident. Uh, I feel the base fee in some instances is very unfair. Uh, I have, I mean, I'm paying seven base fees for properties that, uh, the buildings burnt down long ago, the water bill is still, the, uh, been paid. And, uh, now I'm paying about a thousand dollars a month and using no water, whatever from those taps. And I feel that's, uh, fairly unfair to me and probably several other people who paid taps long ago. Uh, when the town asked us to because they were in financial trouble and made the gross mistake of taking capital funds that should have gone into the water fund for only water use and using those funds for current operating expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any, uh, public comment? So bringing this back to the board of trustees, uh, and I just want to thank everyone who did, uh, you know, all of the public who has spoken up, um, yeah, I'm, we all, I think, agree that we need to be doing something and now just trying to figure out how best to do this as equitably and quickly as possible. Um, town staff, do you have sufficient direction from the board of trustees to prepare for, uh, materials for the next meeting?
I believe we do. Chris, you agree?
Yeah, I can provide some feedback.
And I'll look into the legal steps and keep thinking about something we can do in the short term to, uh, to, to take us through until the rate study is done.
All right. Uh, any other comments from the board of trustees on this before, and we still have actually, technically we have two discussion items yet to go this evening. Hearing none. Um, let's move forward to the second one, second discussion item or whatever discussion item we're on. Um, the long-term rental one. And I would like to also just kind of propose at this point because it's The long-term rental one. And I would like to also just kind of propose at this point because it's 10:15. I don't know about you guys, but the, the four-hour-long Zoom meetings or WebEx meetings, or whatever these are, are just draining as anything. And I'm, I'd like to propose that we just plan on pushing the Envision 2030 discussion also to our next meeting. I think there's a, there's a lot of great information there. I was really looking forward to having a substantial and in-depth discussion. And I, I'm just concerned at this point that we're not going to be able to do so at 10:45 PM. So I'd like to propose that we push that to the next meeting and discuss now the long-term rental regulation discussion item that was brought forth by Trustee Danforth and Trustee Corvallon.
Do we need a motion to continue for that?
We'll motion to continue at 10:15, but we'll, we'll get started here.
Kums Ismail is asking, do you need a motion to move Envision?
Oh, I don't think we do because it's not an action item or a public hearing. It's kind of the case of get to it. I'm just going to give a heads up that people are waiting around specifically for that. I don't think we're going to have a lot of time tonight to be discussing Envision 2030.
This is, this is Trustee Taylor. I would like to propose that in order to give full respect to this topic that we are about to approach, that we table it as well until the next meeting. I think it requires more than 15 minutes of discussion. Just a suggestion.
All right. I turn to Trustees Danforth and Corvallon because this is an item that was brought forth to the board.
Yes.
I will take that as kind of almost a friendly amendment or a friendly suggestion. Lindsay, Tanya, your opinion?
I, I think that, you know, we could possibly introduce it tonight and just talk about some of what we've uncovered. And then can we continue it to a next meeting?
We can certainly introduce it tonight and then just schedule a continued discussion. Yeah, it doesn't have to be officially continued because it's not a public hearing, but.
Yeah, I agree. I think we could give it some time just to kind of brainstorm with the grid.
Well, then, Tanya, Lindsay, actually, I think Lindsay, you are, with the notes I were given, you are going to introduce this one. And then we'll go to Tanya and take it away.
Sure. Thanks. Yeah, this is kind of born out of the frustration that people have had recently with the houses that have been exploding, the illegal activities that have been happening, as well as some complaints about negligent landlords. And so obviously, people want to feel safe in their neighborhoods. And right now, they're not. They're, they're feeling like these, these houses are out of control and, and bad things are happening. And they're crying for us to do something. And so I started looking into, you know, what, what's happening, what, what could we possibly do to keep our neighborhood safe? And, you know, the, after many hours of research, there's not a lot that we can do to prevent the same things that have happened from happening again. There's a lot of renter rights. So they have the rights to not have their house randomly searched. And we want to make sure we protect those. And, and this also goes for owners of properties. What I want to be careful of is that we don't go down the path of making regulations that open up to to having people call in their neighbors and have code enforcement show up to do random searches. This can be used to bully neighbors that you don't like, intimidate them, do things like that. And I really want to be careful we don't go down that path. That being said, that if we wanted to discuss what, what is available to us, we also have to look at what's happening at the national level and at the state and county level as to what regulations and protections are already in place for renters for long-term rentals. Because I think that's one thing that we're, we can start looking at, we can't. I don't think come up with any regulations to, to work on landowners, but long-term rentals, there are some options. So some cities, Boulders, one of them, has some long-term rental regulations that require inspections. So they, and they put this under their municipal code for health and safety. And so they require inspections of rental properties to go and make sure that they have their fire alarms, that, that the heat's working and that they're up to code on, on kind of the basic necessities. And gives owners a chance to fix these things before renters come in. But then, once a renter is in, then they can be in for four years before the long-term rental license expires and requires another inspection. And so that, that does have a four-year window where if some bad apples got into those long-term rentals, that there would really be no way to just do random inspections. It would, it would, I don't want to go down that path where we, we try to force inspections all the time. I know as somebody who's a long-term renter into my 30s, I would hate it if my landlord was constantly coming into my place. I feel like that violated my space. So that's, that's where I want to go with that. And then in terms of, of kind of negligent landlords, people aren't fixing things, there's already a lot of protections in place, especially at the, at the state level, where renters can withhold their rent if something isn't fixed. They can legally do that. So they wouldn't have to pay if, say, their heat is broken. Or water, a water line broken, faucet not working, something like that, something major that makes their conditions not as hospitable or livable, then there's repercussions that they can do. And so withholding rent is one of them and getting a lawyer and making sure that the landlord fixes these things. Those are already in place. I'm not sure what we can do on top of those things already in terms of negligent landlords. So I think that covers everything that I read. So Tanya, if you want to add anything more?
Thanks for all the research you've been doing. I think we should probably start small with everything we do. And maybe just initially just start with the registration of long-term rentals, a database to communicate with the landlords, some way to do it through the internet. So we don't have to give Miranda or Karen any more work. I, I bet I do think we should start with registering and being able to communicate with some of these homeowners that are very far away from here and don't even have any idea what's going on. I could tell you, I could have told this homeowner 12 years ago what was going on in their house if they cared. And then that's just up to them to take that information, to do what they wish. I think there should be a way for people to let homeowners know what's going on with their house, not in a legal way or just more of an FYI. And they can, homeowners can take that information and roll with it or not. But I think a database would be a start. So I, I don't propose major changes right away, but I think we should start with registering long-term rental units, just as we did with short-term rental units. And, but instead of going big like you guys do with that, maybe just think about things as we go, but start small. That's just my opinion.
To you both, for all the time I've been putting into this so far. Other trustees, I know, I think Trustee App maybe having issues with his microphone, but other trustees like to weigh in here?
Yeah, this is Trustee Kums Ismail. Yeah. I just, I do believe that a lot of leases, probably the vast majority, have a, a notice clause in some kind of, you know, section for privacy, saying that, you know, the landlord has give 48-hour notice and then they can enter the property for reasonable inspections or for maintenance or whatever. So I don't think it's impossible as it is and that tenants have that many rights to deny landlords entries to properties as it currently stands. And just the other thing I wanted to note was that I think the other thing to be wary of is if we put kind of onerous liability on landlords for tenant actions, then landlords are going to start getting to the business of rejecting a lot of tenant applications for people who might really need housing. I fear that there could be, you know, potential liability issue with that tenant. And I think we just have to be careful that we don't, you know, mistakenly create a situation that is just worse for people who are looking for housing in general.
Trustee Taylor?
So I, I'd like to start by thanking Trustee Danforth and Trustee Corvallon for bringing this up. And I greatly appreciate Trustee Danforth's very measured approach here. I'd like to begin by stating clearly that people working with explosive materials in a neighborhood and putting their neighbors at risk is a problem. That is not in dispute. People making dangerous drugs is a problem. Private citizens experimenting with radioactive materials in their basement is a problem. Human beings do lots of stupid things that are not problems, but stupid things that threaten others are problems and problems should be constructively addressed. So what we're discussing here is not the problem, but instead the proposed solution. And in order to propose a solution, we must understand the form of the problem. This particular problem is one of several diverse and yet related problems. What is that relationship? What is the common handle that allows us to grasp and control these problems? In order to propose a solution, we must understand why people assemble armories in their homes, why they cook heroin, why they abuse their spouses. There is a common factor, and I suspect that that factor is not a landlord. That's my concern about this. We are classifying renters as different from homeowners, as if they are a lower class of people not worthy of the guarantees of the Constitution, which, though I am not a libertarian, guarantees that we are secure in our person and papers. That's why I appreciate the very measured approach that has been suggested. But this isn't really the time to draw class lines. It's the time to examine why people become isolated and desperate enough to put themselves and their neighbors at risk. It's not the time to further isolate. It's the time to bring those outliers into our community. Maybe this is the time to explore, as we have never done before, how we as a community in these extremely difficult times may draw in and comfort our despairing citizens. So that by reducing that despair, we may reduce unhealthy forms of isolation without threatening personal freedom. I would like to suggest that we consider those issues in those terms, considering how we might not punish, but instead draw in and help the people who are putting their neighbors at risk. That's all I have to say.
I just want to say something real quick. I appreciate your sentiment, but most homeowners would not be doing that to their home. Very, very, very bad for your house and resale value and things that homeowners actually are concerned about. Most of these activities do happen in rental units, which is why we're bringing it up. Want to blow their house, they would use a water extraction method if they wanted to do it. And I think in many cases, it's the motive is financial business, but I'm going to just leave it there. That, I think that's why we're focusing on rentals. Not saying it's not impossible for someone who owns a really nice house. It's like, it was like almost an $800,000 house on a lake. Most people wouldn't do that to their own home that they use. That's just my assessment of what I think.
I think we would need to see some serious statistics in order to assure that that conclusion was correct in most areas. It, it, it could be, you're correct.
The three houses that were blown up.
Which is not statistics, it's, it's, it's personal experience and that's important information. But I maintain that it remains, it remains something where we may, where we may become classist. It's, it is that that concerns me.
It is 10:27 PM. Do I have a motion to extend the meeting?
No, I think we're going to table this for now, correct?
I, yeah, I was going to say, I was just going to try and tie this up here. I think what we should do is have, we have some proposals, some ideas of first steps that were made by Trustee Corvallon in terms of long-term rental. I would like to encourage her and Trustee Danforth to work with town staff and bring back sort of a proposal of sort of a first step of what we can and can't do or can do in terms of regulating or looking at long-term rentals with keeping in mind the equity issues brought up both by Trustee Kums Ismail and the concerns or constitutional issues and rights issues of Trustee Taylor. We have two minutes left. We are going to barring a motion to extend the meeting, we have one minute left. I would like to approve the Envision 2030 discussion item to the next meeting. I would also encourage everyone to read the staff reports, the packet, because there's been a lot of things happening in town, a lot of great work. And just before I close out, the one thing I did want to flag from there is the town cleanup is happening August 1st. I know town staff is still looking for volunteers from the Board of Trustees, anyone who wants to get up at 8:00 AM on a Saturday to help direct traffic. I'm sure we would, it would be much appreciated to let Miranda or Karen know. Otherwise, last comments in the last 30 seconds or a motion to adjourn or extend.
Parks cleanup, parks cleanup on Saturday, the 25th, this coming Saturday, volunteer for that, please.
There we go.
I also want to say I love the new logo.
So much better. Yeah.
It is now 3:00. Do I have a motion to extend or a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Setting his motion.
Second, second, second.
Uh, Mary Lars.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee App, if he can. Okay, he might not be able to vote. Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes, yes.
Trustee Kums Ismail.
Yes.
And I don't, we don't, Alan, I don't think has the ability to vote.
Yeah, I think he's offline. So I just heard that the motion passes to extend the meeting till midnight. All right. Now, thanks, everybody. Yeah, definitely. Parks cleanup this weekend, town cleanup next weekend. Thank you guys all for the, you know, incredible work. I really feel like this board's coming together and starting to find some ways to work together despite our isolation. So thank you guys for all the work tonight. I'll talk to you all soon.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thanks, everybody.